And, City Planner Greg, would you call the roll?
Yes, thank you Commissioner Agelson.
Are you here?
Are you here?
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Tally.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith.
Okay, there are no special orders of business tonight, but item five on our agenda tonight is minutes. And the minutes from the study session, a regular meeting of May 17, 2017, is there any discussion or a move to approve? No discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular study sessions on the City of San Clemente Planning Commission, May 17, 2017.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Crandall, second by Commissioner Agelson, on the study session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes six zero one with one abstention. And then the regular meeting notes of May 17, 2017, is there any discussion or a move to approve?
I move we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the City of San Clemente Planning Commission on May 17, 2017.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Crandall again, and second by Commissioner Agelson. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? It passes six five zero, six zero one with one abstention. Oral and written communication, members of the audience may address the Commission on Matters of Public Interest which pertain to the city and are not on our agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Is there any card for, under item six?
No, sir.
Mr. Tally, your questions, please?
Yes, sir. So I apologize, it's my first time taking a look at establishing the speed limit. So as I look through this, my understanding is, is that the California Vehicular Code requires us to perform a engineering and traffic survey whenever we deviate from the, from the, from the nominal speed limit that's being set. Is that correct?
Actually, we set speed limits on a regular basis. Every five years, we put together a report and set speed limits on the street. Because this is a brand-new section of street, we have to set a speed limit. So there's some temporary speed signs out right now, but they can't be enforced until we actually have an established speed limit that's been approved by the City Council.
So were those temporary speed limit signs in place prior to the engineering survey?
That's correct.
So were we unduly influencing the free flow of traffic by putting a speed limit signs up without indicating that they were temporary in nature and unenforceable?
No, that's, that, it's, it's okay to put up signs, it's just police officers technically can't enforce any speeding tickets without having it approved by the City Council.
So when we do the engineering and traffic study, though, one of the reasons we do that is to understand what the flow of traffic is, correct?
That's correct.
Right, so by putting up a speed limit sign without indicating that it's not enforceable, are we psychologically influencing the speed of the traffic on that road?
What we found is signs, typically, a lot of signs don't have a huge effect on drivers. What does have effect is if a police officer was present. So when we did the speed survey, and we put out the tubes, we didn't ask any police officers to be present at the time, because that sort of thing is something that would influence the speed. Also, the character of the road and other types of, types of things influence the speed, such as the design of the, the design of the road influences speed.
Okay, and so I'm looking at the, the location map for the speed, for the speed items. It only shows one, one location for the engineering and traffic study. Were there multiple sites for that?
There were two locations.
Where was the second one?
There was one location between Camino del Rio and Caí Saluda, and the other location was between Camino del Rio and the county line.
Where was that?
Oh, specifically?
It's not indicated on, at least on the map or the supporting details that I had.
Let me see. I would ha, I would have to get back to you on the exact location of it, but it was between those intersections, and the intersections are really what determines your capacity and influence of speed. So it would have been between those intersections in a straight, straightaway area.
Yeah, because obviously you've got a hill, right? So traffic is going to be slower going up the hill than it's going to be at grade. Likewise, you'd think that traffic is probably slower coming down a hill going into a speed zone where it's 45 as it's indicated on there. What, so, so when you set the, the unenforceable temporary limits that are not posted as such on the, which I guess don't do much to influence speed, on the, on the roads, I'm looking at the road characteristics, and it looks like the roads were engineered to, to move traffic at a much higher rate than what you're recommend, recommending on your speed limit here.
The designed speed, it was designed at a very high speed. It was, yeah.
So I'm, I'm kind of concerned that we're taking a, that we're putting a, a speed limit on these roads that's, that's slower than the surrounding roads. I, I travel that road quite extensively, and if you go up on Antonio and you even go over into the other municipalities, the speed limits are higher. And if we're, and if we're talking about having arterial connections and talking about an arterial connection being something that's valid and is something that we would prefer, and I think the council's actually recommending for the TCA, it would seem to me that we'd want to, we'd want to move traffic along those arterial roads as quickly as possible instead of giving somebody a rationale or a reason to put a toll road through the city. Doesn't it?
I'm not going to speak to the toll road issue, that's not something that I'm going to speak to.
But moving traffic in and out of the city.
But moving traffic, it's, the speed that it's set, it meets the California Vehicular Code at 85th percentile speed, and based on the streets, it has Class II bike lanes, so there are bicycle riders on the street, and it also has a multi-use pathway. The recommendation's been set forward at those speeds based on the code, as well as also having multi-use and bicyclists as well.
So where in the code does it mention the 85th percentile?
It's the California Vehicular Code, specifically, it's in sections.
Let me report.
Well, no, no, I want to hear where in the code it has that 85th percentile, because I couldn't find it when I read the code, but I may have just overlooked it.
It, it's in the code.
Can you give me the section?
Yeah, 22348 to 22143.
Okay. Which, which code specifically says the 85th percentile?
It's, it's in those sections, and it talks about that. I didn't bring the code with me tonight.
Well, and I received a memo stating that those sections were where the 85th percentile, and I couldn't find any reference to the 85th percentile in there. I found a reference to an engineering and traffic survey in multiple locations, deviating from 65 all the way down to 25 miles per hour, but I didn't see where the 85th percentile was codified as, as what that should be used.
Isn't that 85%? I've seen that in the code before.
It is, and it's also.
It's not in the code.
It's been quite a while, but since we've had one of these, this is the first time we've had a new road in town.
It's in the vehicle code.
But it's, I know this has been a pretty standard we've applied for six years.
It's, it's a standard engineering practice. It's also in the California MUTCD, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices as well, and it's, it's a state standard.
But that's not the code, right?
It is in the code, and it's also in the California MUTCD.
And maybe we could have Jennifer forward you that section of the code, so that way you can review it as opposed to trying to find.
No, I'd certainly like to see that, because I'd like to see the speed limit, I think we're, we're setting the speed limit too low. I'd like to see us be consistent with the, you know, speed limit on, on the, the 45 mile per hour recommended range when you're coming into the city, you know, into the actual, I guess, Camino del Rio, at 45. I think that's, I think that's sufficient, but the county line, I think, as I watch traffic and engaging traffic passing me as I'm going 60 on that.
Actually, the, the county's speed limit's 55, so you're speeding up there, huh?
Oh, I am, but, but it's not enforceable.
We do have a card, do we have any, do you have anything else to add, Jennifer? What we'll do is we'll open the public discussion, then we'll go into, go into discussion and vote on it.
Thank you.
Is there any, and I'd like to open the public discussion, and we have the speed limit by Mr. Brad Malmwood.
You know, after last night, the council meeting, and, and I think of Wayne a lot, you know, common sense should dictate, I can't imagine this comment, I don't know this lady, but if you post 55 there, people will go 55. So if you post 45, they're not going to go 55, because they're thinking of getting a ticket. And what they've done on El Camino Real, if you stay one side, if you stay north of the, the overpass of the five, it says 30 miles an hour, so people stay 30 miles an hour. Then when they go and measure it, it's 85%, that is in the code, of the perceived speed limit. But if you tell people they're going to go 30, how fast do you think they're going to go? You go the other side, it's all of a sudden 35, and there's narrower roads. So the whole concept of this town is we should not be posting speed limits and then figuring out what the average speed limit is if we want the reasonable level of traffic. I mean, common sense should control, so I applaud you for raising these issues, you know? I mean, only common sense is when you're that far out, you should be going 55. But, you know, if you post 35, I don't know what they posted, people aren't going to go 55, because they're afraid of getting tickets, they don't know it's unenforceable. So use your common sense and go for it, thank you.
Any other cards on this subject from the public? Now, we'll close the public discussion and enter into commission discussion on, Commissioner Tally has some concerns about the, the speed limits there. I personally, based on the data and the data sheets we've looked at over the years, I'm comfortable with this, it's been posted there. It's a little lower than what the county posts, which is five miles an hour. And interestingly enough, the speeds are higher on the northbound segment, which is when you're going uphill, not going downhill, which I kind of found interesting when I looked at the actual data. They've segmented it between Saluda and the other parts, and they start slowing you down coming down the hill, which I think is a good, good thing coming into town, which is 45. So I'm comfortable with what staff is, personally, is presented, but I'm willing to have other people's opinions on it. Commissioner Wu.
Chairman Brown, you mentioned that the speed on different directions, they're different according to the survey. Do we usually set the speed limit the same, same number, or can they be different?
They can be different on, on different segments.
So on the same segment, going northbound or going southbound, they can have different speed limits?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. It's, it, the same going, it's, we set the speed limit the same going northbound and southbound. I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. I thought you meant on different segments of the street, not different directions.
The survey shows, the survey shows the speeds are different. Going northbound is a little.
The survey, yeah, and we, yeah, and when we set the speed limits, we average the two, they get averaged, and you get the 85th percentile, the combination of the two of both directions.
So the common practice is to set them the same number?
That's correct, yeah. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your first question, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Agelson?
Jennifer, how wide are the lanes there?
They're wide. I, I can tell you, they're 80, I think it's, the actual width of the road ranges from.
Each lane?
Um, see, it's 80 feet, so they would be very wide. I haven't measured them, but they're definitely probably over 12 feet. They're pretty wide.
Yeah, it, it just seems that.
It's very wide.
When I travel, and I go there quite often, it seems that they're a smaller width than, than usual. But, because I know that in certain sections, I drive faster, and certain sections, I drive slower, because it goes into one lane as you're going north toward Ortega Highway.
Yeah.
And so I slow down. There've been some accidents there, haven't there, with bicyclists?
There, there was, there was a, a very bad one on the county side, on that street, yes.
Uh-huh. Yeah, I, I just think that perhaps in, in certain segments of the road, they could have different speed limits, because I know, I know that in certain portions of it, I go much faster, and then I go slower when I'm coming down the hill. And also, there's a school there, not that there's much student pedestrian traffic there, but there's certainly a school where parents pick their kids up, you know, from there. So, thank you for bringing this up, and I'm just, I'm just wondering if there can be certain segments of different speeds?
We, we could certainly look at some different, more segments, we've already segmented, typically, we segment it at different intersections, and so we segmented at those two intersections at.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on this, that the assumptions are that there's been a significant amount of research done, analyzersion by staff, in order to come up with, you know, justifying, allowing these, these speed limits to occur. But I think it's important that we consider the physical environment, you know, time to stop. So you've got one segment north and southbound, but different topography, your time to stop is going to differ. If you're coming downhill, approaching a residential feeder at a signal, you want to keep that in mind, be mindful of that. It makes sense that those speed limits would be lower. I wouldn't want the same speed limit on both sides. So that's something to consider. You've got two residential feeders, you've got Saluda, and you've got Camino del Rio, both that, that terminate at La Pata, where, where this is the area of question anyway. So when you're coming over that, that hill, it very easily could exceed the posted speed limit without even knowing, knowing you're doing so. So that's just something that I think should be considered, was probably considered in the report that was presented. Is that correct?
You mean going separate north and south?
Right, coming down south and changing that speed limit southbound, coming down, downhill.
You mean down, downshifting to 45 as you enter into the more populated area?
Yeah, 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 so as, after you pass Del Rio, into, it goes to 45, and there's even, right now, even a, a temporary sign that says 45 ahead, so people driving know that they're going to be entering into a 45 zone.
But once you get out of that area, it would make sense to have some consistency all the way through.
Yeah, at that point, it is 45, yeah, it, it is.
So, in that sense, it, it all kind of pencils out.
Right, right.
But maybe, maybe it's something, maybe it's more information needed here for the commission to look at, because we were presented with that, all of the details.
It might be, yeah, it might be, yeah.
So we get a consensus here of more information is required, then?
I'd like one, I'd like one, one quick question here. I, I think it's important to understand that we're not rating the speeds that are recommended here, aren't the 85th percentile. They, they rounded to the 85th percentile, and then they, they used discretion, it is afforded under the CVC, and they lowered it an additional five miles per hour. So if it was at the 85th percentile of 55 miles per hour on the thoroughfare sections, I'm, I'm quite, I'm quite happy with that, and I certainly agree with your comments that 45, as you're coming down into the residential neighborhoods there, is, is absolutely makes sense, and I think is a, is a fair statement to, to back off of that 50 mile per hour observed traffic there. But I think lowering it five miles per hour from, you know, from the Camino Rio up to the, to the, to the city is, we should do what this traffic survey said, which is 55 miles an hour.
The, just so you know, the Transportation Engineering Manager has recommended the lower speed limit based on the bike lanes that are there, as well as the multi-use path, as well.
You have to take that into consideration.
I understand, they have that discretion.
So you want to, you want to continue this to, for more information? Is that consensus?
I think so. I'm okay with that.
Have a vote of, in favor, continue this to, I guess, best way to do is to table, I guess, right? So they can bring it back at their convenience?
Yes, we'll table it.
Okay, so I have a motion to table?
So moved. I'll motion to table item. Item on a consent.
Seven A.
Seven A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye, passes seven zero. Okay, and with it, no other questions on seven B, we'll move on to.
Consent calendar?
No, it's consent. If you don't, if you don't, it's considered.
Chairman, I have a question on seven D.
Oh, never mind. Okay, we have a question on seven B. Go ahead.
Jennifer, on seven D, we're proposing to limit the parking on Avenida Serra to two hours, between nine o'clock to six o'clock. Seems like it's a response to a particular complaint, a complaint from a, a business owner here. Now, in between the alley and El Camino Real, we have many similar situations, for each street, we have those situations. We can probably do some experiments to see how, how it works, but is there any way to When we change the parking limit to, you know, two hours, is there any way in the future to evaluate whether this limit works or not? Because if it doesn't work, then less regulation is better, we should remove it. If it works well, we can expand it to all the other similar situations.
Well, what I can tell you is, this is a similar situation to other streets along in this area. For example, Avenida Victoria, wait, yeah, Avenida Victoria in that same segment, that's just, it's just a few streets over, also has the two-hour parking, as well as several other streets in that neighborhood. In 20, in July of 2010, several streets in that area were put on, were also added to the two-hour parking restriction, and that was done back in 2010. The limits of that study ended at Cabrillo, so didn't pull in Avenida Serra, but it's a very similar situation to what we're doing in other parts of the city in that exact area.
So when do we decide to do it, when we decide not to do it? For each street?
Yeah, well, at this point, at this case, it's, it's a case-by-case basis. The planning department, I think, did a parking study at, last year at some point, and looked at some different parking numbers. But engineering, we, we look at it a case-by-case, and this was a case that came in. We went out, assessed, did an evaluation of the parking in that area, looked at other streets that were similar in that same area, and agreed with this petition. We then sent an email and reached out to the Downtown Business Association, and then also noticed all the residents in the area and businesses.
And the business there does not provide any parking, they can, they solely rely on public parking, is that true?
I, I believe at that particular business, there's three onsite parking spaces in the back, but it is a mixed-use building.
Okay, on the backside, there are three parking spaces for apartment, apartments only, but I noticed one parking space is occupied by a trash dumpster. So that's, you know, when we talk about the reason, any way we can get that parking space freed up for renters, so a renter will not take the on-street parking?
That's outside the view of what's agenda is here tonight, I believe, so, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we could look at on what the, the onsite is, but that's not a part of the, the purview of the request tonight.
Personally, if I can inject here, I think this is a best practice thing, I would recommend that the, between the planning department and engineering, that they go back and look at these similar situations from an entire T-zone between Palos Atta and Presidio. Personally, I would think that every block between El Camino Real and the alley should be two-hour limited parking, so that people can park down there and we can get more access to downtown.
Yeah, that was.
So I consider actually a good, a best practice, it should be expanded, myself personally.
Was it beneficial at the, when you did this back in 2010?
It was, yes, yeah.
So I, that was.
It's beneficial.
No, I'm sorry.
No, I kind of wanted to see us.
I stole your thunder, and I apologize.
It's good thunder. I'd rather, I'd rather, I, I think we should take a look at how we can expand this.
Commissioner Blackwell, you had your light on.
I.
Okay.
That's what I'm thinking, too, because if it's effective, I think all of the, you know, similar situation should have a consistent policy, otherwise we're just pushing, pushing them around. It's a ban-aid solution, sort of, but if we can look at the overall parking area and implement a similar policy throughout the district, that would be a better idea.
How about a motion to prove this, and a direction to engineering staff to do exactly that? Commissioner Wu, is that amenable to the commission?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we forward this to, I guess this is going to be forwarded to City Council?
Has to be.
And with the recommendation that they consider authorizing the traffic engineering study implementing this on similar streets in the T-zone.
Second.
I have a motion by Crandall, second by Tally, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, seven B. Okay, the next minor issue on the agenda tonight is the cultural heritage permit 16376, conditional use permit 16377, and site plan permit 16378, Miramar Event Center and Restaurants.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be recusing from this item, and I'll read a statement here. I've been a spokesman for this development since 2016, and although I have been in, in no way compensated by anyone for my support and comments, I feel that it is appropriate that I recuse my participation as a planning commissioner this evening. However, I will be speaking as a private resident.
Thank you, you're excused. With that, I'd also like to inform the audience that the public hearing process closes staff presentation, which will, by the applicant, and by the applicant, not exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for the attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes, and following the closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to questions by raised, raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. Ms. Gregg.
Good evening, planning commissioners, Amber Gregg, City Planner, and I will be the one presenting this to you tonight. And we'll let Mr. Agelson get comfortable. Tonight before you is the Miramar Events Center and Restaurants. It's also known as the rehabilitation and adaptive reuse of the historic Miramar Theater and historic Bowling Alley in the North Beach area. Before we begin, I want to note that on your dais, there is a copy of an errata, and what that errata states is that there was a minor discrepancy in the total existing square footage of the theater. It was previously noted in the staff report that the theater is existing at 8,200 square feet, when in fact, it is 7,836 square feet. So I just wanted to put that on the record, and for any members of the audience, that is also provided on the back table for reference. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. So just in case somebody's not familiar, the Miramar is located at 1700 North El Camino Real. It's on the southeast corner of El Camino Real and Avenida Pico. In the immediate vicinity is several other historic resources, including the casino, as well as the Ole Hanson Beach Club, and a historic restaurant that used to be occupied by Ichaberrys. Other surrounding uses include a commercial, as well as residential uses. So first, a little bit of the history on both of the items. The Miramar was opened in 1938. When the theater was originally opened, it did have 750 seats in it. In 1947, a theater café was added to the side of the building where the addition of the Orange Julius is located today, and that café was torn down in 1961 and replaced by that Orange Julius. In 1992, the theater did close, and unfortunately, in 2005, it did suffer fire damage due to transients located within the building. So a brief history of the Bowling Alley, that one opened in 1946. In 1947, a Texaco gas station opened onsite. In nineteen forty-seven, a theater café was added to the side of the building where the addition of the Orange Julius is located today, and that café was torn down in nineteen sixty-one and replaced by that Orange Julius. In nineteen ninety-two, the theater did close, and unfortunately, in two thousand and five, it did suffer fire damage due to transients located within the building. So a brief history of the Bowling Alley, that one opened in nineteen forty-six. In nineteen forty-seven, a Texaco gas station opened onsite just adjacent to it on the north wall. In nineteen sixty-three, the gas station was converted into a gift shop, and then in nineteen seventy-one, the gift shop was modified into a produce market, and in addition, was added to that. In nineteen seventy-two to nineteen ninety-two, the Bowling Alley was used as a number of different uses, including retail, office, and actually, the Elks Lodge was located in there for a time as well. Both of the facilities have been closed since nineteen ninety-two, and it should be noted that the, the building that did have the Texaco gas station in it has been torn down, and the tanks have been removed from the site. So the proposed project, and that's before you tonight, is for the rehabilitation of both historic resources. The Miramar Theater is proposed to be adaptively reused into a performance and event center, and the Bowling Alley will be rehabilitated and adaptively reused into a eatery. This will be restaurants inside there, different culinary specialties, and is similar to what a lot of people know as Anaheim Packing House, where you have several eateries in there, and then there will be an outdoor eating area on the patio as well. Conditional use permits are also requested as part of this application. There are three that require conditional use permits. The first is for indoor live entertainment and amplified sound. It should be noted that only the Miramar is requesting the live entertainment and amplified sound, not the restaurants. The second request is indoor and outdoor onsite sale and consumption of a full range of alcohol, and the third request is ninety-two historic parking waivers. So as far as the site plan, this is what the existing site plan looks like. We have the theater on the right-hand side, and to the north, you can see the Orange Julius Edition. Where it says courtyard right now is really an open dirt flat area, and then you have the Bowling Alley on the left-hand side, and the paving that you see there is the pad areas from the previous developments that happened to be there as well. So what's proposed, on the right, you have the rehabilitation of the theater into an event center. It's basically staying within the footprint, along the north wall, where the Orange Julius Edition was, is currently, right now, is proposed to be restrooms, with the addition of two hundred and sixty-two square feet on the left side of that for a green room. The proposed seating for the theater is four hundred and thirty-five seats, and on the left-hand side, you'll see the restaurants. The dark green area shows the rest, or the building as it is right now, and the light green area to the north is an addition that's proposed of approximately one thousand forty-three square feet. And the reason why that addition is needed is in order to accommodate current building health and safety codes required for ventilation of restaurants, and that allows a lot of that building, or a lot of those materials, to be located on the roof of that structure, as opposed to putting it on the character-defining dome roof of the Bowling Alley, which is going to be retained. So, as part of the project, the applicant is also proposing a basement underneath the existing Bowling Alley. This addition is also required for health and safety requirements, because health code requires you have so much square foot of, of storage for each restaurant. So this addition helps accommodate that, and then the portion that's under the new addition also accommodates the restrooms for the building. An elevator is also located in there for accessibility requirements. It's important to note that the Bowling Alley will be retained in place while this excavation is happening, and staff worked with the applicant to ensure that that could happen, and that there would be no impact to the historic structure. So the landscaping for the project site will be greatly increased. Washingtonian trees will be planted along the public right-of-way, consistent with the master corridor landscape plan that follows the rest of El Camino Real up. You can see that there's more, my, I'm sorry, my mouse isn't working to point to things. There's more landscaping on the north side of the Miramar Building, which also includes a patio area that has a fountain. The pavers that are used onsite will be decorative papers and consistent throughout the development. On the Bowling Alley, there is a pergola that will provide shade to patrons that are eating onsite there, and there will be potted plants in that area as well to help add landscaping also. I apologize for the poor quality of this plan, but it was the best one that I had, so I apologize for the words that are on there. But as far as the plant palette itself, it will be a drought-tolerant plant palette, similar to the beach trail in the city, as well as the new landscape roundabout that's located in North Beach as well. So a cultural heritage permit. A cultural heritage permit is required for all historic structures when an addition or modification is proposed to it. It should be noted that the Miramar Event Center has been, or the Miramar and Bowling Alley has been vacant for quite a long time, and the city has made efforts in order to try to provide tools for the rehabilitation of it, and that's per the, the general plan was a goal, in order to help rehabilitate the Miramar. So the city received a grant and commissioned a Historic Structures Resource Report, and in two thousand and thirteen, that was provided to the city, and it helped provide a frame, framework and guidelines on how to rehabilitate the two facilities, that one made sense economically, and two was consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards for historic structures. So the proposed project is based on that Historic Resources Report, and it relied heavily to ensure that there was no impact to the historic structure, and it was done in accordance with the Secretary of Interior Standards. Along with the application, the applicant also conducted its own historic analysis in two thousand and seventeen, because as you can imagine, with a vacant building, deterioration continued to happen over the four years, and so we wanted to analyze how bad it had continued to deteriorate, and if the two thousand and thirteen study still supported all the recommendations. There was a couple other, because of the damage, there was a couple different modifications in there, and that's noted in that two thousand and seventeen report, but all are consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards, to make sure we retain our historic resources integrity. So, based on the resources, and the fact that all the character-defining features will be maintained, and in fact, there's minimal modifications to the historic structures as a whole, that there's no impact to the historic structures, and this adaptive reuse helps preserve the historic structures. So here's a couple pictures of the character-defining features of the buildings. There's a lot more pictures provided in the report, but this kind of shows some of the deterioration of the peeling paint, the state of some of the wood elements, how they're boarded up. So all of these will be retained, restored, or replaced in kind. So here's a rendering of what the Miramar Event Center is proposed to look like. As stated previously, the goal was really just to rehabilitate the structure as-is, with minimal modifications. On this one, you can see that there is a courtyard area added on your left-hand side. The front half of that courtyard does have wrought iron, and the reason for that is so you preserve the public's view at looking at that character-defining feature, the main entrance of the Miramar. And on the left-hand side, you have a solid block wall, and that's to help any potential noise coming from the courtyard, and the block wall will help minimize that. So I just want to go over a couple elevations here, that shows all the different changes that are being proposed. So this is a little bit better one, that shows that the roofs, roofing material will all be maintained. The goal is to keep everything as-is and just restore it. Things that need to be replaced will be replaced, and the originals will be used as a model. On the front, underneath the front pergola area, there is, it's currently open right now, but the proposal is to put wood doors with two-divided light mullions, in order to help provide more of a lobby area, because when you go into the Miramar, the lobby area, the vestibule area, is very, very small, and it's not enough room for people to really enter into the Miramar. So that will help preserve it, as well as provide some additional space in there. The goal of the applicant is to restore the Miramar sign, or provide a plate sign, similar to this in the, in the picture, but it should be noted that no signage is being requested as part of this application. That'll be a separate application that will come before the planning commissioner later. So this is the elevation, we're along El Camino Real. On the forefront, you can see the one-story addition that was the Orange Julius Building, and will now house the restrooms. On there, to provide pedestrian interest, you have the archways, the three arches, on the two outside arches is landscaping, in the center arch, you have a, a fountain there. And at the front of the Miramar, you do have a nice pay patio area that now meets all ADA requirements, as far as slopes and accessibility. On the right-hand side, you can see the wood doors, and that will provide the trash enclosure area. And this is the area on Caí de Sete, there's really no change to the building on this side. The only difference will be the wall that'll be constructed as part of the courtyard there, and that, too, will be a smooth white stucco wall, and there will be a landscaping planter separating those two areas. So this one is a rendering of the Bowling Alley with the restaurants. On the front, you can see that there is a new accessible pathway, as opposed to the steps that are currently there. Those steps do not meet accessibility requirements, and are very haphazard to get in if you were just to keep those steps. It's important to note that that addition is going to be constructed in a way that it could be removed at a later date, and therefore, there's no impact to the historic structure, because it could be recreated in kind. So you see the, the walled-in area for the patio. It is a mix of wrought iron and block walls, we'll see as we keep going through here. So here's the front elevation again. You can see the elevation on the right-hand side, that has a requirement of having that landing, as well as the landscaping that's going to be added, and then the courtyard area. Towards the back is the new addition, it's a one-story. The tower element matches the existing, well, I shouldn't say matches, it complements the existing towers, and that is needed in order to house the elevator that's located in there. This is a view along El Camino Real. So you can see the, the mix between the solid block wall and the wrought iron, and the reason why that's important is because El Camino Real is a thoroughfare in our city, and it's very loud, and to have any, anyone sitting outside, there was a need in order to help bring that noise level out there, so it wasn't so impactful. So that's why we have the mix of wrought iron, because we want to make sure people are visible from the public right-of-way, in order to energize that street scene, but the block wall also helps damper those noise impacts. This is the Bowling Alley without the patio, so looking beyond, there are four, I'm, four openings, three of which are doors, and the one in the center is a pass-through window. And then this is the Caí de Sete side. There's only minimal openings on this side, there really are no openings along that side right now, they're very small, the ones that are there. And then it should be noted, you can, that on the barrel roof, that will be restored and retained, and the applicant is proposing a skylight on the top of there, in order to help provide natural light. When you're inside that Bowling Alley, it's very long, it's very dark. The skylight is a low-profile skylight, so it's not anticipated to be visible, but if it were, it would be minimal. And then this is just a rendering that shows what that street scene along El Camino will look like, as well as Caí de Sete. So moving on to the conditional use permits. There are three requests as part of this project, the first being alcoholic beverages, the second being live entertainment and amplified sound, and the third being the historic parking waiver, so we're going to go ahead and go through each one of those now. So in regards to alcoholic beverages, the applicant is requesting a full range of alcoholic beverages. This is for both sites, and it's for the indoor and outdoor onsite consumption. The requested hours for the indoors are seven days a week, from six AM to two AM, and I wanted to note that that's the same as the casino, which is located next door and is also an event center. Outdoors, it's seven days a week, from six AM to ten PM, and again, that's the same as what the casino is conditioned as. In regard to the live entertainment and amplified sound for the Miramar, the requested hours is until two AM. The requirement with that is that all windows and doors are required to remain shut, and outdoor live entertainment and amplified sound is not a part of this application, and that would require an amendment to the CUP, or the applicant has the option of applying for a special activity permit, which is an SAP, and that can permit up to fifteen permits of outdoor amplified sound within any given year, and, and not that I want to keep comparing this casino, but just because that is the adjacent event center, that is how they have their outdoor events, and that should be noted. What is different about this event center from the casino that's important, is that it is a block-construction building, and so it will damper the noise a lot. So noise impacts would be significantly less than the wood-constructed building of the casino, so just a point of information. So the last one is regarding historic parking waivers. Historic parking waivers are different than regular parking waivers within the zoning ordinance, and they only apply to historic structures. And this is because historic structures are developed prior to nineteen fifty-six, and nineteen fifty-six, when this, is when the city adopted its first parking ordinance. So before that, parking was never required to be provided with any development, if, if it was provided, it was by choice, it wasn't, it wasn't a requirement. So the general plan actually recognizes this, and there's policies to provide incentives. And the reason why it recognizes this, because it understands that historic structures, because they typically don't have parking, would never be able to be adaptively reused, because it would, the constraints of the parking requirements would never allow it, and we would lose a significant amount of our history and historic resources. So the way this is implemented is through the zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance permits waivers of historic structures, as long as there's public parking in close proximity. Now, this is different than other parking waivers in the area, or in the city. This requirement just says in close proximity, where, for instance, downtown says it has to be within five hundred feet, or there, there's a set threshold. So that's another difference. So what are the parking requirements for the project? The zoning ordinance only requires a net increase in the parking requirements to be assessed, as opposed to requiring the entire development, because that would be a, a big burden on the project. So what exactly does that mean? It means that the building ends up with a credit. Even if you have no parking onsite, we don't want those buildings to sit vacant, so we have to assume some type of use in order to allow something to function in there. Now, historically, the Miramar's been used as a theater, you know, from nineteen thirty-eight all the way to nineteen ninety-two, it was a theater. That was its only use, and it had at one point, seven hundred and fifty spaces. But the city's zoning ordinance for non-conforming buildings, which this falls under, says that after a use has lapsed for a year, all of those grandfatherings of, of all those spaces go away. So what, what the zoning ordinance goes into, as far as this, how we assess it, is we take the existing square footage, and we divide that number by the parking requirement for retail. And we use retail because it's one of the least impactful parking requirements, and it's a typical use within this area. And that parking requirement is one parking space for four hundred. And stay with me, because I know this gets a little cumbersome and confusing, and I apologize for that. But at the end of the day, the existing square footage is thirteen thousand thirty-six square feet, and it's not divided by two, I'm sorry. When you divide that by four hundred, it results in thirty-two parking spaces. So that's their credit. On a side note, the zoning ordinance also for non-conforming structures, in one area says, you only have to park the amount of square footage that you add, as opposed to the use, or what's existing. And under that scenario, if we looked at that, the total parking requirement for the entire site was only thirty parking spaces. But recognizing that that's not how this code has been applied in the past, we use this calculation, so just wanted to make that clarification. So parking requirements continue. Event center and parking, restaurant parking requirements is the exact same. It's one parking space per five seats. And the zoning ordinance, in order to help promote outdoor seating areas, lets you waive the first sixteen outdoor seats. So, you take three hundred and sixty-five seats, you minus sixteen, that gives you six hundred and nineteen, you divide that by five, the requirement is a hundred and twenty-four spaces. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I know, this is, this is hard, but we're getting to the, we're getting to the crux here. The existing credit is thirty-two, so we minus that out, so the total required parking spaces for the project proposed before you tonight is ninety-two spaces. Again, there's no onsite parking for the Miramar, so the applicant is requesting a waiver of all ninety-two required parking spaces. So, looking at the findings and noting that parking needs to be within the area, the city did a parking study this last August during the summer. The reason why we picked the summer is because that's the busiest time during North Beach, when everyone's out of school, and everyone's visiting the beach. And during that time period, the peak occupancy was at forty-nine percent, and that peak time was on Wednesday at seven PM. And on the graph on the right, you can see that, that's that blue line that goes to the top there, but on average, across Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that times, or that occupancy's actually a little lower, and is more at like forty-six percent on peak times. But still, for us, we use the maximum occupancy to look at it, and what's also important to note is that the peak time is at Wednesday at seven, but the event center isn't going to be operating all the time. It's probably, if, if, hopefully, if it's lucky, it's going to probably be operating a third of the time. And when it operates, it's most likely going to be on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, when there's actually more parking available than what's shown here. But still, we wanted to be conservative with our parking numbers. So what is the forty-nine percent? It means that of the three hundred and eighty-four public parking spaces in North Beach, approximately a hundred and ninety-six of them were available, even during the most impacted parking time. So then we analyze this. Of the hundred and ninety-six parking spaces were available, what we did not know is if there was an event happening at the Ole Hanson Beach Club and at the casino during that time. happening at the Ole Hanson Beach Club and at the casino during that time. And as opposed to assuming, or not knowing what the type of the event was, we said, let's just assume an event was not happening, to be as conservative as possible. And then we backed out the parking requirements, and the casino plus the Ole Hanson Beach Club has a parking requirement of 99 parking spaces. So you subtract 99 from the 196, and that still leaves 97 parking spaces available, and again, 92 waivers are being requested. This is the most conservative way to look at parking and the impacts, because this also does not take into account, there could have been events at that center at that time. Or it doesn't take into account multimodal transportation travelers, people coming in with ride shares via Lyft or Uber, or on the train, walking, by bike, that does not come into this either. And it also doesn't take into account mix of uses. All of those factors actually result in a less impactful parking requirement than what we're anticipating. So based on all of this, staff believes that the parking is available and that the findings can be met in order to grant the waivers. But in the future, should this result in a need for more parking, the city does have the ability to add more parking in the area. There's the MOU channel, that's directly across the way, and that could have up to 69 parking spaces. And the city also owns a couple additional sites that are currently vacant right now. That's the lot that's right above the MOU channel, and then a portion of the lot that's on the utilities building area as well, that we use for staging right now, and that's about it. So there are opportunities, should this be a concern in the future. So the general plan. The general plan actually has a good deal to say about historic structures, North Beach, and the Miramar itself. There's goals and policies that promote the revitalization of North Beach into an entertainment district, which originally was when Ole Hanson established it. It also talks about the historic preservation of historic structures, and it has specific policies and implementation measures for the Miramar Theater itself. There is an implementation measure in there that actually puts the burden on the city to think of ways to revitalize the Miramar Theater, whereas in this situation, we have a private developer looking to revitalize the theater. And then historic preservation is an important part of our heritage, but that's reflected in our general plan as well. The city has an entire element dedicated to historic preservation, and that's not typical of cities. So it does show the importance of historic preservation from the community as a whole. So with that, that ends staff's presentation, and staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Mr. Crandall, do you have a question?
Would you please explain the importance of the parking contract with the city?
Yes, so as a part of the condition of approval and in your staff report, there is a historic parking preservation agreement. And what that is, is it's a private agreement between the city and the applicant that says that the applicant will retain the uses onsite and the historic structures in a good manner in exchange for the parking waivers. And the agreement also goes into the availability of parking, to make sure that parking is available for the surrounding uses as well, and if parking should be needed, that it will be developed in the future.
Mr. Towe?
I've got, I've got two questions. The first, I think I heard you correctly, but on the, on the parking requirements, I think what I heard was that actually codified in the city code is that you only need to have a minimum of 30 parking spots for this structure because of the historical nature of it and the way it's being viewed. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
That is one, one portion of the zoning ordinance. It's not one that we've used in the past, and it only resulted in 30 parking spaces, and we didn't think that that, it could apply, but we wanted to be conservative in our approach of analyzing it, but yes, that...
I'm just looking at it, if, you know, we, we take the stance that 97, or more than that's required, you know, the code probably, if it was challenged, they would say, hey, the code only says you need to provide 30 parking spots for this. Is that, you're being conservative?
Yes.
Okay. And the second was on the conditional use permit for the amplified indoor sound. You went into a great deal, you know, that it was inside a concrete structure with block walls, but there are, or there are decibel levels that are in place for that, correct?
That's correct.
To ensure that even though we're considering allowing them to do that, they still have to meet certain noise requirements if it was impacting property owners next to it.
That's correct, and they would still have to comply with the city's noise ordinance. And the conditions, all the conditions that are in there, there's quite a few in the conditions of approval, all come out of best practices, because we do have a number of event facilities in our city now, so we've been able to craft specific conditions of approval to help minimize any noise.
And if memory serves, we, not too long ago, we approved a conditional use permit for amplified indoor sound that was not too far from here, didn't we? I thought we, we did that.
Review the proposal that did?
We didn't do that, okay.
Yeah, that one ended up being continued.
Okay, I didn't know if there was any problems that came from that.
There's some CUPs in here, or conditions of approval, on the noise ordinance, and if there are other issues, and I think they would have to provide soundproofing and install a noise meter.
That's correct.
Condition proof number 39, and there's several in here on the noise.
No, I saw, I saw quite a few. I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that it wasn't unfettered noise, it was fairly highly restricted.
Thank you.
I think also to amplify this thing, I think, part of your question about the parking, the parking agreement with the city council is required to be in place before they pull a building permit also, is what it's been conditioned also.
That's correct.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, I just, I have a great deal of experience with restaurants now, much to my chagrin, and, and the essentials that you were talking about earlier in the, in the presentation about the storage and all of that, that's, I mean, that's absolutely critical and is just a fundamental tenet that you need for a restaurant night. I know they won't have enough, just based upon what they are displaying there, but it'll be enough to get by, so.
Question, the briefing, your briefing didn't cover, but in our briefing, there's a very important linkage to sequoia here in the exemptions, particularly the Class 31 and Class 32 requirements. Could you expand upon that with historic preservation and rehabilitation? In other words, without this exemption, a full EIR would require, which would delay the program a year or two, and the cost of a full EIR, having gone through about 2,000 pages of EIR on roads around here lately.
Yes, so to...
Could be prohibitive.
To kind of explain that quickly, without too much detail, because it does get a bit cumbersome, but the California Environmental Quality Act does require that every discretionary project that's a project undergo review for environmental impacts. As part of that, there are categorical exemptions that can be applied. You still have to review the project, see if there's going to be impacts, but we did those studies, and we found that the project qualified for a Class 31 exemption, and that's for the rehabilitation of historic structures in compliance with the Secretary of Interior Standards. And reviewing through all those requirements, it did meet that exemption. And then the project also met a second exemption, which is a Class 32, and that's for an infill development exemption of which this is. And there are a couple other parameters that you have to stay within, and this project met all of them, and so based on that, it was exempt from environmental review on two different counts, and you only need one.
Some of those restrictions are very strict, as far as moving structures or walls or anything like that, I think is the way I read it in the staff report.
Yes, that's correct. And prior to the historic resource exemption being established, a higher environmental review was needed, whether that was a NAGDEC, a mitigated NAGDEC, or an EIR.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, Amber, I've got a question on the parking standard you're applying. There are a number of requirements in our zoning code. This zone is a MU1. MU1, underneath MU1, it's one parking space per four seats, then this is also in North Beach parking overlay, I guess? Depending on if, if the project is participating in commercial parking benefit district, you may get a discount on that. I think for a restaurant, it's a one per five, but if it's a theater, it can be one per six. If we consider this a theater, of course, we can use a different standard, but if we consider an event center, then by using, referring to La Ventura, it is one per four seats. Educate us, and clarify, how you come up with a one per five for the event center?
So you're right, La Ventura did have a one per four parking requirement because it was not within a mixed-use zone. It was in a commercial zone. This project is located within a mixed-use zone, and that allows a one per five parking requirement for event centers as well as for restaurants.
Isn't that for MU3 only?
Oh, they can't hear you, they can't hear you.
Isn't that for MU3 only?
You need to turn on a microphone.
His light's on, it's on.
So I'll, I'll repeat the question, is what's the parking requirements for the mixed-use zone for the MU1? And the, the North Beach parking overlay that you're talking about does, does talk about the one per six parking requirement for a theater, which would actually allow the project to have a lot more seats. But because this isn't operating as just a theater, it's an event center, we apply a more restricted parking requirement, which is one parking space per five seats. So we have been conservative on what the requirement actually would be, when studies have shown it's probably more like a one per six requirement. For the, for the mixed-use designation requiring a one point, or a one per five, as opposed to the one per four throughout the rest of the city, we still apply the one parking space per five to all MU zones, not just the MU3.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. First off, if you could go to the courtyard plan, the open dining area?
That one, or would you like?
The plan, the plan.
Oh, the plan, I'm sorry.
That's kind of hard to see, but in that outside area of the restaurant piece, not the event center, but the white area, the outside, right above where it says Restaurants in green, there seems to be a raised platform there that looks suspiciously like a stage for some kind of performance. If, if that is a performance, we are here saying that there's no outside music allowed in this permit. And so I don't quite understand that stage, if it's going to want that in the future or not. Has there been any thought about what that means there?
Yeah, we did ask the applicant about that as well, and I would defer to them as far as their operations for that, but they are not allowed to have live amplified sound outside, but they are intending, from my understanding, is to apply for the special activity permits for up to the 15, and would be utilizing that when it's not in service to have tables on top of, or when it is in service for the entertainment.
So it's conceivable that that will be for entertainment, but it will be non-amplified, is that correct?
It depends on what the special activity permit would be. Right now, that, it'd be non-amplified.
The other concern I have, if you go back to the site plan slide with the yellow future parking areas shown? That, that's fine. Isn't there also a potential of parking area there that's between the coffee shop and the Japanese, ex-Japanese restaurant that's currently the, the new marketplace that was there today? That is a potential of parking, does it not?
Yes, it is also.
Could that be also considered yellow in that diagram?
Yes, it could.
Okay. I'm sure that a lot of people are going to be concerned about the parking on this project. I think that if you go through all of these formulas, you can maybe justify this, but I think if you kind of just use your gut instincts on this and say, well, if you're going to have a really big event at this event center, and you're going to have people eating in this restaurant, you're going to have something going on in the casino, and you may have something going on like a wedding or something else in the swim club, that's going to be a lot of people, and that's going to take up a lot of parking spaces.
Just a question, staff, are we in discussion here?
Well, my, my question is that I, I think there will be a parking problem with this. And so how would these future yellow areas that you're showing, which you're implying is sort of a future opportunity and maybe, maybe an overflow solution to this, how would that work get done, and who would pay for it?
If parking was needed, and I will say that, you know, the city did commission a parking study in 2009 by Nelson Nygaard, and I'm just going to go over a little bit of history here. And in that parking study, even with no development in the area, and it also looked at development in the area, it said that the area would not need additional parking until 2035, based on current parking spaces available, as well as future projected need, and it took into account the Rancho Mission Viejo area being constructed also. And at that time, there were less public parking spaces than there are now in North Beach, and that's because of restriping that's been done in the area recently, so we've added a couple different sites there. But still, they said even with the development of the Miramar, and at that time, they had assumed the Miramar would have 650 seats in it, they said that they still would not have an increased parking requirement until 2035. So if there were requirements for future parking, to get to the crux of your question, that would be the, the city approving that development and doing the improvements for that.
Does the city have any funding provided to turn those areas into parking if it becomes a problem?
I would have to defer to that to the, to the city council.
You know, that's, that's a question of future city council action, I guess. We don't, you know, nobody in this room could answer that tonight.
And just, and just to clarify...
Well, I think it's relevant to this project. I mean, I think parking is a big issue, and I'm just concerned, because you, you bring up the parking opportunities, but are they funded and are they realistic, I guess?
No, but the goal would be, you know, there's several different ways that this has been set up in the zoning ordinance in order to help facilitate the concerns of parking. And there aren't actions that have been put into places yet because there hasn't been a parking impact in North Beach. That is parking management tools that could be applied, similar to our downtown parking in order to help better manage parking, as well as constructing parking, that would be a last-case scenario to actually construct it. And it should be noted that with the casino, with the waiving of the 64 spaces, it was a big concern at that time, too, that there would be an impact on the parking, and that that would take up all those parking spaces. And even with the casino open, it still reduced numbers than what was anticipated at the time. So parking is very dynamic and fluid. I think we've seen a lot of change in parking, even with Uber and Lyft for special events, and so that's why we do these studies on a regular basis, every two years, to monitor the parking and see if the need actually is there before we would do an investment like actually constructing the parking. So the point is, there's, there's lots of roads before we actually construct it.
Okay, then my final question is, has the applicant, is a part of his business plan, talked about a valet parking scheme for an event center, and how that would work?
If they were to do valet parking, they would need to do a traffic study in the future to show that there was ample stacking, but right now, that is not a part of their, their project. But valet is an option in order to help improve the parking.
Thank you.
Mr. Crandall?
Two quick things. One, that's why I asked the question about the contract that the city council will negotiate with the applicant to guarantee that there will be parking, and how it's funded and all will all be, I'm sure, discussed in there. And two, could you do a quick synopsis of the approval process that this project has to go through before it's completed from here to either city councils, coastal commission, back again?
Okay. So as far as the city goes, planning commission is the final approving body for the project, unless it were to be appealed. After that, they'd still need to get approvals from the California Coastal Commission, and they are hoping to apply for that after they obtain approvals through this process. Then once they receive those, then they would start the building permit process and go through the construction documents.
But then there's a city council requirement for the parking.
Yes, and they would also still have to do the, that agreement prior to that.
What's the timeframe on that?
Timeframe on what?
Just, you know, kind of a rough order of magnitude.
The agreement?
No, the, the process.
Well, if they obtain a waiver from coastal commission, it would be a, a fast process. If they do not obtain a waiver, it will go through a little bit longer process, but I'll defer to the applicant on coastal commission.
Other questions?
I do have.
Yeah, go ahead.
One quick question, and I was just curious, why Wednesday night, on the peak parking, was there any reason for that?
Yeah, they caught us a bit off guard, too. There's a lot of trail walkers in the summer months. There's a lot of trail walkers in the summer months, so that could have been a part of it, but typically, commuter parking is freed up more at that time, but that was the peak parking.
Okay. So, no reason, it just, that's where it fell?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a pretty well-done parking study.
There could have been an event going on, too.
This commission's the one that reviewed it and agreed with it and passed it on to city council and recommended implementation. So, I think we scrubbed it pretty good when it was presented to us by staff seven, eight months ago.
I absolutely agree. I was just-
So, I mean, it's the peak is 45% use, yes, there's a lot of spots there. Any other questions of, oh, I'm sorry, that glass cup was hiding. Please, Mr. Black.
Yes, four points of interest. Amber, okay, first, coastal waiver, why is the applicant waiting when it can be, I believe it can be reviewed concurrently? Is there a reason the applicant's waiting?
They need approvals from the city prior to them being able to submit for coastal.
Okay, so it's not confirmed? Okay. Good. Is it not, oh, I'm sorry. Windows on the south elevation, can you speak to the current design and why there aren't more?
So, windows on the south elevation, on the Miramar, there's never been any windows, and we wouldn't want windows on a theater. But as far as on the restaurant themselves, that area is where they have shelving in the restaurants because they need to have somewhere for their operations, and so where they could put windows, they did put windows.
Okay. I think the area I'm referring to is on the south elevation. I think that area is designated for restaurants.
Kelly De Shesha?
Yeah, and we can defer to the applicant as to why they don't have more windows.
Okay, just didn't know if that was a limitation as to what could be done. Maybe it was a historic preservation issue, not to your knowledge?
No, the less impact you have on the historic structure, you know, the better, but I think that was a choice on their part.
Okay, great. The event center tower, any protections that may be in place for that from a historic perspective?
It is a character-defining feature, so the tower must be retained, and they are planning on keeping that tower and rehabilitating it and replacing any necessary structural components.
Okay. But modifications could be made to it in the future if it stays with the intent of the design?
What we're reviewing is the exterior, so the exterior should not change because it's a character-defining feature. We don't want to have an impact on a character-defining feature that has different environmental impacts. So, yeah.
Okay. And signage for parking, have, has there been discussion on just sort of guiding human behavior to the auxiliary parking spots, the city lots that may be available, both to the north and to the, I guess, and to the south? How are we going to keep people sort of corralled so that they are more inclined to use that rather than really relying on their own behavior to take the path of least resistance and park in the residential zones?
Right now, there are not proposed any additional signage for parking in the area, but that is something that we could definitely look at. Yeah. Yes.
Okay, would the applicant care to make any, unless there's no more questions, staff, would the applicant care to make any statements?
Hi, my name is Daniel Conrady. I'm an architect and also a historian architect. I represent the ownership as well for the gentleman that could not be here today. So, thank you, commissioners, and Amber, for your great presentation. You stole a lot of my thunder, so, but I do appreciate that. One of the things that we looked at when we looked at the entire facade is that we wanted to create the theme that when you're doing rehabilitation or rehabbing or preservation, there are key components that you have to comply with the Secretary of the Interiors. And so, we wanted to safeguard all those requirements so that we could look at this building as a historic building that could get on the register for the theater. And also, since the bowling alley has been dated, it could be on the state register, too, with certain types of procedures. We also looked at the historic preservation, what's happening in the city itself, and we wanted to enhance and protect the only handsome vision, which was the Spanish Village by the Sea. The style of the architecture is Spanish colonial revival, and with Spanish colonial revival, it allows you a lot of latitude because there's different influences in that style of architecture. There's Moorish, there's Mediterranean, there's the true Spanish type of architecture that encompasses that design. So, as we looked at the overall facade and what we would do with this property, we wanted to make sure and safeguard that as you look at the property from any view, from any street, that it's whole, it's complete. And we use courtyards, which is also consistent with the style of architecture. We use perimeter walls that encase the area, enclose it, to define the area itself, but the wall itself also combines the two buildings together, so they're not piecemeal, that you got a theater or event center, and you got a culinary experience specialty restaurant facilities, but it's consistent. The other thing that we looked at as a design approach is that we wanted to make sure that we address certain aspects of the architecture itself, which are the character-defining features. And that's why you see the introduction of wrought iron on the perimeter walls that allows visibility into the space. On the existing bowling alley, the courtyard area where you see the perimeter wall, we also looked at this as a gateway to the city, and that's why you see the monuments feature on the corner of Avenida Pico and El Comino Real, because we look at this as a landmark and as gateway to the North Beach. The tower element, as someone mentioned, as far as changing that, we look at that because it's high visibility in the city and also in the North Beach as the most prominent feature of the North Beach area. When people arrive in San Clemente, that's one of the first things they see. It's not going to be a white elephant, it's going to be a jewel, and that's the way we are approaching this. We're looking at the materials that we're using, consistency with materials, which are natural materials used in this style of architecture, and we're going to be mandating that that's use of materials is consistent all the way through the entire project. So, as you look at the project, you'll have a very good feeling that this is a great place to come to. We respect the character-defining feature, which is a community-serving-oriented entertainment hub for the North Beach area. And I want to talk a little bit about operations so that everyone understands why we call the theater and event center. As we look at older theaters throughout the United States, theaters have declined in value and use because of the internet, the use of mass media. And having these large buildings that are vacant or not used to its capacity is a shame. This building right here, the way it's constructed, which is a concrete institute where it's a port-in-place concrete building, is basically a vault, but allows us a lot of opportunities to create opportunities inside the building for different types of activities. We look at it as a performing arts center that is also very welcome for the city. That would be a great asset to this community. We look at it for special events like weddings that could take place in this, dances that could take place in this. And the other thing that we wanted to embrace was that the way theaters are changing through society today, that there's introduction that the theater becomes not just a place to visit, to watch a movie, but also an experience. And we look at the opportunity to even create dinner theater for this facilities. Having the restaurant adjacency to it also provides this opportunity for us. As you looked at the lower set plan, which is the basement, and we talked about requirements for health and kitchen requirements, we wanted to put all the back-room stuff below ground so that we could preserve this beautiful building, which has a barrel vault, a truss system throughout the restaurant use, and be able to create a large open space to that. With the basement itself, we also wanted to use that as a culinary catering kitchen that could cater to the bowling alley, or to the theater itself or the event center, so that you could have dinner theaters, or if you had a wedding, they wouldn't have to have trucks line up on the street and all the problems that would have with, you would have to deal with traffic, that that service could be right there on-site. And so, by having this adjacency, it really supports both buildings the way they would operate. The event center would also have an onsite manager that would handle all the different types of events. The concern about traffic around the perimeter, we are concerned about the noise level that is generated. But one of the things that, as we looked at the event center, is that you have to have a place of arrival, a place of street presence, and that's why we took the porridge share element that's out in front, and we enclosed that to create a larger lobby area for a gathering area, created a courtyard outside of that area, as you see it on the rendering, that could be used for intermission, for people to be able to relieve themselves from being sitting cramped in a seat to come outside, or just an area for staging areas people are entering into the theater itself, to be able to pull people into a containment area, and then be able to be able to use that facility. So, we're very cognizant about the functionality and the use of the facility as well. And so, that's why when you're looking at the different, the site plans itself for both the event center and the restaurant, we looked at, we wanted to create people to be able to see into the area, we wanted to create areas for people to come into the area and use the areas itself, whether it be culinary for eating, or for coffee in the morning, or pastries, or for evening for cocktails with their friends. Now, on the restaurant for the bowling alley, as you see the perimeter wall, you'll see archways that you enter through into that space itself. The road on El Comino Real rises to the south, and if you were to look at our site plan, the elevation of the patio area is actually at the same level, except for the raised platform, and I'll describe what that is. And so, it actually is recessed into the existing grades, which also helps mitigate some of the noise traffic sounds from El Comino Real. And yet, it brings a vibrant look into that restaurant area because you'll have some lights, you'll see people in there, you'll see some color with the umbrellas, with the awnings, and it'll be an inviting place that people would want to come to. The raised area that you see inside the courtyard area that Mr. Smith mentioned, would you only be used for special permits if we were to have any type of music? And we wouldn't be thinking about a large type of music venue, it'd be something small. But what we wanted to do also is that it's a multifunctional space. If everything's at the same level, it can also be very boring. So, we wanted to create some tiering, and we created that platform as a tier where we could put tables on, and then if there was an event that we wanted to have a special permit for, we could actually use that raised platform for that use. There is a ramp that goes up to that, and it's just a low profile. If you were to look at it, it's only two tier or two steps up, so it's not a large raised area that, as one would view it. The other thing that we looked at was opening up the bowling alley, which we call the restaurant building now, and be able to create views to the ocean and views to the perimeter around the community. As we looked at the most distinguishing features, it's mostly viewed from El Comino Real and Pico. And so, we wanted to protect the roof system, the barrel vault roof system, from any penetrations for exhausts that would take place for that building. So, those types of requirements, we put the, if there was a cook area, we put on the shake aside so that the penetrations, and I've provided some of the documentation for this in the DRSC meetings, would be mitigated so that the view would be true of having a very historical building as one perceives it. We did provide some additional windows on Calle de Sheca, and the reason we did that is that there are opportunities for views going out, but not all, not along the entire area, even if there was no requirements for the restaurant's uses inside, would be pleasing because you're looking at the back area of the casino, which is their loading area. So, having a dinner and looking outside and looking at a loading area is not, to me, desirable. So, where we did place those is where we could maximize the views looking out from those areas. And we feel that by having adaptive reuse within the compliance of the Secretary of the Interiors, we're allowed to do this and still keep the building within its historical framework. So, with that, Amber really stole most of my thunder, so I'm going to turn it over to Jim Holloway, and he's going to talk a little bit about parking, and then I'll answer any questions you have.
Yep. Thanks, Jim. Good to see you.
I'll try. Great presentation by the staff, very, very thorough, you know, stole a lot of our thunder, which is great. The staff, when they went through the parking analysis, I think you understand now, they presented a theoretical worst-case, very conservative, you know, analysis, which is entirely appropriate, that's what I would have done. But I think it's also important for the record and for the minutes to think, or talk a little bit about the physical reality and the physical counts that have occurred out there, what's really happening. And also, there was a discussion earlier about using common sense in your decision-making process, and I'm going to hit on a couple of those points. There's also a question about why Wednesday is peak, and a couple other comments that were made during your question-answer. The staff, the city staff did their parking survey in 2016 for four days in August, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, you have four days in summertime in August. And then, the applicant team also did a survey December 28th, which was Christmas break. It was a great Chamber of Commerce day, 72 degrees out, surf was up, the kids were out of school, but MetroLink was in operation. The beach club was giving what had free lap swimming that day, and there was an event going on at the casino at 1:00 in the afternoon. All these things happened at 1:00 in the afternoon. At that time, we surveyed, and there were 195 occupied spaces, 185 vacant spaces. So, that's about 52% occupancy during that Christmas break. And we also did a physical analysis and count of the parking over Memorial Day weekend, another great weather, if you, that was just a couple of weeks ago. On Saturday at 1:00, the occupancy was at 50%, and on Sunday, it was less than 30% at 1:00. So, that's what's actually happening in the field. Now, people that have, let me go to the Wednesday question. The reason that traffic peaks on Wednesday is because of MetroLink. And Metro, and people use, go to offices, it's, there's a bell-shaped curve on when you go to your office, you can all think about how you work. Wednesday's your highest occupancy day in office, that's the highest occupancy day in MetroLink, and MetroLink is a major, major demand driver for parking in that area. Still, on MetroLink, and one of the, even these, even to me, I've been looking at this for many years, it seems like the parking is really light down at North Beach. There are, after we've really thought about it, there's two reasons. More than 20 years ago, the city entered into an agreement with MetroLink to provide 150 parking spaces in the North Beach area for MetroLink parking. They predicted in less than another 20 years from now, that parking demand for MetroLink would have been 195 spaces, but it's fallen far, far short of that. They're running about 50 parking spaces or less now. So, the demand projections that they made more than 20 years ago, and then the demand projections that were used in the Nelson Nygaard study that Amber referenced 10 years ago, those demand projections were, you know, straight line, but they have fallen far, far short of those demand projections. far, far short of those demand projections. So, that's, that's the prime, that's the most important variable. The second most important variable, 10 years ago and 20 years ago, when demand projections were made for beach usage, there was again a straight-line projection for beach usage, and unfortunately, as we know, there's no more beach at North Beach. So, those two big variables explain why intuitively, you wonder why there's, there's so little parking. We're running, you know, we're surveying August, survey Christmas week, Memorial, we're running right at 50% plus or minus. Now, 50% converted to numbers, it's 384 spaces down there, 50% is 192 vacant spaces during all those practical survey times. And then finally, one of the commissioners, Smith, pointed out that it's possible that you have max capacity at every one of these facilities, all at the same time. We haven't been able to survey a situation where that actually happened, but it is a theoretical possibility. But there's, in the literature, it often quotes, you know, kind of a saying, that you don't plan a church parking lot for Easter Sunday. So, we're running at 50% every time we survey, August, Christmas week, Memorial, plus or minus a couple percent, 192 parking spaces are still vacant. What you really need down there is more activity, because you have people arriving by, another thing that's affecting parking is you have parking, you have people arriving by the coastal trail, by the new coast, El Camino Real Trail System that generates a lot of bike traffic, you have pedestrian traffic coming down from Marblehead, and you have automobiles and buses, and now in the summer, you have a free summer shuttle. So, all these things are very dynamic, and it really helps to kind of intuitively explain why these parking numbers are so low. So, I think I've hit about everything I wanted to say, any questions about parking?
Any questions of Mr. Holloway?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Good seeing you again. Is there any other questions of staff or the applicant?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, can I have the architect? I'm just going to do a couple of quick things here, because in my mind, they're kind of important, and I, and I'm just wondering how they fell into the design protocol. The first one is, it appears that you have large mechanical units on the roof of the theater, is, is that true, and is that the only way you could do mechanical for that?
There is existing mechanical units on the theater itself, if you, they're painted red, so a lot of people do not notice them. So, we were looking at locations for mechanical systems. The mechanical systems that are up there right now, that you probably do not notice because of the height of the building and your viewing point to that location, were much larger than the mechanical units used today. The efficiencies of mechanical units, as you may or may not know, is, have increased tremendously over the years. We've looked at other locations for providing systems coming into the billing, and there is a space between the two buildings itself that we might be able to use as a platform area to bring cooling into the billing. But one thing that was kind of unique about this billing is that, as a theater in its age, this billing was air-conditioned at the time, and that's kind of unique for a billing of this nature. Being a billing that is a concrete structure, has a heat gain and heat loss that is mitigated by the thickness of the walls, and so that we are able, you're able to control the heating and the cooling a little bit easier in a billing like this. However, what we are proposing is that we would locate the units in similar locations where they were located, but the units would be smaller, and we are looking at more efficiency type units. There is a plenum space between the ceiling of the theater and, or event center and the roof structure itself, it's not very large, and we would do that study for when we get into the next step, which is looking at the constructability and the types of systems that we'd use, that if we had opportunities to put them in those areas, we would do that.
One of the big aspects of the positioning of the event center is a path of travel from the larger parking area, and that seems to be along Calle de Sheca, which right now isn't in such good shape, there's really not very wide sidewalks there or anything else. Have you, have you given it some thought in terms of how much importance there is on that walkway, that pathway, and what could be done about it?
Actually, we did look at that, and we made several proposals when we first started the project, we even suggested have it, Calle de Sheca as a pedestrian street, and restrict parking that would be used for just servicing and loading and so forth for the casino. However, the Coastal Commission also rolls into this because there's parking along the sidewalk that they use in their parking counts for the Coastal Commission. And so, change in those parking requirements would then impact the require, the study that they would have to do for this, and it could put this project like two or three years out. But regardless of that, we feel that the width of Calle de Sheca is fairly wide, wider than it is for a one, just a singular one-way street, and that there could be opportunities where you could increase the sidewalk that would be outside the perimeter of our, of this property lines. What we did embrace though, is that in order to bring people to the theater with the existing parking, the sidewalks that, as you see on the right rendering, along Camino Real, those sidewalks have been improved with pavers, and they're, they have been enhanced. The elevation gain that you have there is, could be accommodated by people with ADA issues, and we felt that that would be more of an experience to have a urban-type walking area along Camino Real. So, we did take it into account, but again, we're, we didn't want that to restrict us on the process of this project.
I noticed that on the elevations that we're seeing here on the screen, there's looking like nice light fixtures attached to the side of the building, except for along Calle de Sheca, there seems to be no light fixtures along there whatsoever. Have you thought about how that area would be lit at night when people are going to be walking there?
I'm going to kind of put it in two different ways. The streetlights that would be on Calle de Sheca would have to be streetlights that would illuminate the streets itself. The lights that you see on the billing itself are served for two purposes, one is they're functional for where they're located, they're located in the pathway of travel for entrances to the, the billings itself. The size and the style of them are designed in a, in a method that are complacent with and consistent with the Secretary of the Interiors on how they view light fixtures for this architectural style. And so, when we looked at where we would place them, we wanted to make sure that they were placed appropriately, sized appropriately, and the type of materials that would be used would be consistent with the style of architecture. We did not address Calle de Sheca as a main walk area with specific lighting, because the sidewalk that is along Calle de Sheca, which, if we could have the site plan, that would, might be helpful. And I'm going to use this map over here, is that when you get to this area right here at the bowling alley, the width of the sidewalk here is about two and a half feet wide.
Yeah.
As it extends to the south, it starts to gain to a normal-sized sidewalk. By the time you get to the theater itself, it's actually four and a half feet, so it becomes a real sidewalk. So, from this point here on the bowling alley to the corner of the bowling alley, or Avenue de Pico, that sidewalk really isn't truly a sidewalk, it wouldn't be certified as a sidewalk as far as the width providing accessibility along that pathway. So, we addressed it in our initial meetings, talking about opportunities that we could do for that. However, we were told that we can't, we're really not to touch the street itself and not to, and the ideal of the pedestrian street was not a welcome ideal by certain individuals. I think that there's possibilities for increasing the width of the sidewalk, and there's possibilities for reducing the width of Calle de Sheca to create more of a pedestrian walkway along here, so there, there's opportunities for that.
Okay, the bowling alley plan is ambitious in the fact that you are, as a part of your plan, planning to excavate underneath the bowling alley, to add the storage and other requirements for the restaurants and catering, and bathrooms and stuff. And that seems to be, in my mind, going to be difficult, but it can be done. Did you in any point in this project, look at an alternative, hold on here, of excavating along El Camino and moving the bowling alley over on top of it instead? Did you ever look at that alternative?
Absolutely. In fact, as we looked at the project itself, we were looking at how to maximize the development on the site. We looked at even multi-story type of development, and part of that, creating that pedestrian walkway on Calle de Sheca, was to have an opportunity maybe with a patio area off of that, tying into that area.
Right, right.
However, as we approached the project and we were looking at the historical requirements and tax incentives that would be generated, we're also concerned about moving the billing that could impact the parking waivers that we would definitely need for this project. And talking with the planning department and others, we were, we felt that we could not afford to flip the billing like you're suggesting without providing some type of onsite parking. And by doing that, it would destroy the opportunities that we would have for increasing the amount of pedestrians that could be using the site.
But you did, you looked at it as an alternative.
Absolutely.
Because I think a lot of people would ask that question, why wouldn't you put people on the other side? My last question is, how do you foresee LEED affecting this project in terms of energy management? Do you have a program for this to be energy-conscious and something to also make another star on this project?
Good question. I'm also LEED certified, and I've worked on a lot of LEED projects. I was the head architect for a company called Jacobs, which was one of the largest engineering and architectural firms in the United States. And when it came to historical buildings like this, and I was involved in quite a few historical buildings throughout the United States, we looked at LEED practices to be used in the applications for the billings. To qualify for this actual certification, there is a lot of restrictions on what we could do or couldn't do because of maintaining either the facade, or the types of materials, or the types of finishes that were in the billing. However, we did look at systems, we looked at the energy management approaches for the billings itself with the type of mechanical systems that would be incorporated into the billings. And so, the Secretary of the Interiors, as we talked to them, and I'm involved in a lot of different organizations, we talked about how to use those practices that are sound practices to reduce energy consumption, but also to make better efficiencies for the billing. So, we would be doing that through the next process, which is through the design development and the construction documents for the billing. And I might, and I add to that, when you're looking at LEEDs certifications, for people that are not aware of what that means, is that there's specific guidelines and certain standards that you achieve in the LEEDs program. You can have a silver LEEDs program, or a gold, or platinum. And each one of those have specific requirements that, it's kind of a checklist that you have to go through. It's very rigid, and sometimes that oversees the design of what you're trying to achieve, trying, trying to create the functionality of the billing. However, the true beauty of architecture is the balance of both of those. When you're dealing with historic billings, our concern also is how to maintain the historical references of the billing, the defining characteristics of the billing, and maintaining that, so it's, it's still in compliance with the Secretary of the Interiors. And that's the, also, the beauty of working these type of billings with that practice.
Okay, well, thank you, sir.
Mr. Blackwell, you have a question now?
Yes, I still have questions for you. Would, thank you.
You're trying to escape, but we keep.
I'm here.
I applaud your design, by the way.
Thank you.
This is well-presented, it's very nice. But I do, I would like to revisit a couple of the topics that you've already sort of covered, and that was the width of the sidewalk. Can we talk about that some more? Can you explain why we're not expanding the width of that sidewalk on the south side of the bowling alley, in that area that is really inadequate? It's, like you said, about two feet plus.
Can you get in the microphone, please?
There is a, can anybody else not hear me on this side? Okay, good, I'm so, can we do something about the mics?
You guys can get into the microphone.
Yeah, yeah.
You just got to be louder.
Yeah, okay. So, let me, let me back up, can you hear that? I'm sorry, I'd be shouting otherwise, so I don't know what else to do. So, how about now? Okay. So, getting back to the sidewalk issue, there was a discussion about the inadequate width of that sidewalk on the south side of the bowling alley. Not only is there, after conducting a field survey, and by the way, myself and another commissioner did meet with the, with the applicant, your client, on May 19th, just to get some clarification on site, to identify some of the interior site characte- characteristics, and to be more familiar with what's happening on the inside. And during that meeting, we did note that there was some issues with the width of the sidewalk, also noted that there was a utility pole that prohibits access as well. So, why wouldn't we revisit that? The width of the street seems adequate for vehicular movement, so why, why can't we introduce that as part of the plan?
Okay, first of all, I agree that the sidewalk is not sufficient, and it's not adequate as a sidewalk, and I don't even deem it really as a sidewalk. However, as we looked at this, this was kind of like the back door to the billing itself, there was no entrances onto the billing itself from this location. And so, as we talked about how we could use the sidewalk, or even the street itself, it was, it was deferred back that we would have to, that's a city issue that we'd have to work with the traffic department and the city to look at what they would do with the streets itself. The same thing is true on the corner of Boca La Playa and El Camino Real. If you look at the far corner, and I'm just going to step up here. That corner was reduced from a standard corner to a very wide corner, which increased the crosswalk going across that street from one side to the other side. People that come north or, or southbound on El Camino Real, and they take that corner, they're taking it at a pretty good speed. I'm not sure why that is, but part of it has to do with the profile of the corner itself, that you've got a nice wide corner, you're going to increase your speed, and we talked about, I heard the traffic information earlier. So, there's opportunities even for changing that corner as well, that the traffic department talked to us about, that they would take on as their special project to support our project itself. So, we recommend that if, that this would be definitely a benefit to it, the project to benefit to the area itself, and that if traffic would like to continue their studies on that, and what they would do for that, we would definitely embrace that and support them on it.
Well, that's good to know. Thank you. Next question, getting back to, getting back to the windows on the south elevation, you had stated that one of the reasons why there are not more large windows on that elevation was really, wasn't making any sense, you didn't want to look at the back of the casino.
No, that was only one part of it. The most important part of it is, as we looked at how the billing would be occupied from a functionality standpoint, is that we wanted to open up the side facing onto the courtyard with openings, and as you saw in the elevations, that there are multiple openings along this area, so that we created the indoor-outdoor space. We provided doors that were, be panelized doors that would fold, so that we could have full-size openings, so that there wouldn't be perceived that you're going through a doorway from, to get from one space to the other space. And by doing that, that meant that the passageways of the flow of circulation would be along this edge right here. However, we do want to have some However, we do want to have some vendors that would be located in that area. The bulk of the vendors that we would want to propose for the area itself would be along the Calle de Sheca side of the building itself. Anytime you have, and it depends on the type of use that they're having, but anytime you have any type of grill or any type of cooking requirements, you would have hoods that would block any type of viewing that would go into that area there. But even without that, if it was just a pastry shop, there was a requirement for pastries and shelving. And what you don't want to have is the shelving dividing the people, looking at the experience of them being entertained by the cooking itself, that whole culinary experience of seeing how the food is being prepared. And we wanted that wall here to be able to use that from a service standpoint. So, there are rare reasons for doing that. And where we did put the windows is that we wanted the windows here on this side here, that, there's windows here and windows here that have the ocean views, that would open up into this area right here. We had windows on this side right here that have views going down into this direction here. And so, placement of windows was also important to us, but also looking at the functionality of how the building would actually be used. And we want to create enough flexibility in this building that a lot of people have come to us and expressed interest to be located in this building. Some have smaller requirements, some have larger requirements. And we want to make sure that we pick the right type of vendors, that we have a good mix in the building itself, but we do provide the requirements that they need for their operations.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions of the applicant? Can we let him sit down for sure this time? Thank you. And with that, we'll open the public hearing, and we have several cards of people who want to speak. And we'll start with Mr. Ray Harju, Harja, from San Clemente?
I have to apologize for my glasses, I forgot my reading glasses. I'm Ray Harju with the North Beach Community Association, and we in North Beach are looking forward to having the Miramar rejuvenated, up and running. North Beach is back! We've conducted some surveys over the years about what North Beach, North Beachers want, and I wanted to present some of the highlights of those surveys. And these are just questions and answers to the survey. And it all sort of fits with what Amber has said that the city wants and what has been going on here. Turns out what North Beach wants is exactly all this stuff that you guys have been talking about. So, one of the questions was, what best describes what you think North Beach should be? The top answer to that was historic district, followed by entertainment, restaurant row, and gathering place for events. And it all fits with the Miramar. What do you want to do in North Beach? Walk the paths, attend public events, and dine. And dining comes up over and over again, so dining was real high. What are North Beach's biggest problems? Vacant buildings, followed by homeless, both of which would be, would be helped a lot by Miramar rejuvenation. What types of businesses would be best on El Camino Real? Restaurants and entertainment. And then the last one was, this is a rank 'em question. We were out on the lawn of the Ole Hansen Beach Club earlier this year, just talking to people and asking them to rank various things. And the question, question was, what do you, you know, what, rank these things, you know, on a score? Very top thing was, was get the Miramar implemented. You know, that was by far the top, top thing that people wanted in North Beach. Second thing that we've heard a couple of times here is make North Beach more pedestrian-friendly. Public events was right up there, and empty shops filled, again, was fourth. So, the North Beach Community Association wants to encourage the planning commission to approve the plans that you've seen for the Miramar, and we hope you can do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Next is Mr. Larry Culbertson. Followed by, Dan, you can put a card in too. Do you still want to talk?
If there's questions, that's the end. Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Larry Culbertson, resident. I want to start out by thanking Ms. Gregg for a tour de force presentation, it was amazing. Your command of this situation is wonderful. The Miramar Theater has been sitting empty since 1992, the bowling alley about the same time. There have been several owners with grand plans for how to revive the property. In 2005, the owner wanted to raise the building, but the majority of San Clemente residents have resisted any drastic alteration of the property or removal of it. Tonight, you have before you a plan that I believe is embraced by the majority of people in San Clemente that have an opinion on the subject. I've attended the meetings and hearings on this project and studied the reports. Planning staff and the cultural heritage subcommittee have not gone easy on this project. They set the bar high, and I believe that the applicant has cooperated. I believe that this project will maintain the historic integrity of the property by keeping both the building on their original, both of the buildings on their original footprints and retaining all of the character-defining features. The small addition proposed will not overwhelm the historic buildings, and it will complement the appearance of both of them. The overall appearance of the property will also be greatly improved. The ugly asphalt area between the buildings and North El Camino Real was for many years home to a gas station at the corner and the Orange Julius stand adjacent to the theater, with little, with little or no vegetation. This project would give us inviting patio courtyard with landscaping and fountains. This project will give benefit to and receive benefit from the wonderful improvements of the entire historic entertainment district. The Ole Hansen Beach Club and the Casino San Clemente have both been rehabilitated and probably never looked better. The proposed uses, restaurants and an event center, seem to be exactly what the public wants at this point in time, so success is highly likely. The sticky subject of parking is well explained in the staff report. Parking waivers for historic property projects are a necessity if you believe in preservation. The studies indicate that we have adequate parking. I encourage you to approve the CHP, the CUP, and the site plan permit for the Miramar Event Center and Restaurants. Also, please determine that the project is categorically exempt under the SEQA analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak, Jim Ruland, followed by Wayne Eggleston.
Good evening, I'm Jim Ruland, I've been a resident of North Beach now for 18 years, as of a couple of weeks ago. I am also a, on the board of directors of the North Beach Community Association, and I'm also here to encourage you to approve the plan. We think it's a great plan. As you know, this requires about 10,000 jigsaw puzzle pieces coming together in just the right way, and staff and the applicant have done a great job with doing, doing that and putting it together right. One of my big concerns, I could go on about how, how good I think the project is, but I'll express a concern that I have, that I think your, the normal impulse is right of how good can we make it, how perfect can we make it, how many problems can we solve as a result of doing a big project like this? I think that's a good impulse to have most of the time. In this case, we have a derelict building, a building that's been derelict for 25 years, and we're about as close as we've gotten to having not just an improvement, but a vast improvement, a really good plan on a very difficult site. So, I kind of want to say, maybe be careful of gilding the lily, that if there are occasional parking impacts or a narrow sidewalk that we, you know, have to continue to live with for a couple of years, those are eminently solvable problems. And they're easier to solve and better problems to have than a derelict building for another two years or five years or 10 years. As, in the planning commission, you can approve the project, but also make a recommendation to city council that these other, that staff go and start to look into these other areas and that we make progress in improving the alley and that sort of thing. And in those kinds of problems, that's the kind of thing that I would recommend. The only thing I would mention, kind of operationally, is I would appreciate it if you would look at conditions of approvals number 24 and 32. I think they may not be quite standard. In 24, it allows live entertainment, amplified music until 2:00 a.m. This area butts a residential area, and we, the planning commission approved a, an event center a few years ago in South El Camino Real that also abutted an event center. And there was hours restrictions, if my memory serves, I think 11:00 p.m., and that included the breakdown time and things, things like that. So, that might be something worth taking a look at for the neighborhood there. And item 32, condition 32, it talks about allowing the doors to be open and then turning down the sound. I think from a, I've never seen a condition of approval like that. From a practical point of view, I don't see how you can reduce the sound if you throw open doors and windows. People are gonna still be talking at the volume that they're talking. It's difficult to get the music turned down. So, from a practical perspective, I don't think that, I suspect that's not possible, so it may be something you want to look at in your discussion. But the bottom line is, is I hope you approve this, this great project, it'll be a great boon to North Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wayne Eggleston, followed by Wallace Hunt.
Good evening, Wayne Eggleston, resident of San Clemente. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Amber, for a very comprehensive and thorough analysis of this. What a, what a study. Thank you very much. I also like to thank Jim Holloway for spearheading this project through, and Jim Petches, who was the city planner until a few months ago, who was very inspirational in the project. Reimagine the Miramar and the bowling alley. Now reimagine North Beach. Reimagine North Beach becoming the entertainment hub of San Clemente, which Ole Hansen wanted it to become. With the marble head development up there with the million-dollar homes, it's now time to do something substantial in the North Beach area. The plan before you is really the first application that has ever come before the city. Now, there have been other plans, and they've been big plans, large developments that would have, which would have been a lot more impactful with traffic and parking than this plan is. The Miramar is a historic asset, and it deserves certain waivers such as parking. I would ask you to review the 2016 parking study and the calculations provided with regard to the total impact that this would have, including the casino and, and the Ole Hansen Beach Club. If parking becomes a problem in the future, the city has land for this. So, this is not, this should not really be an issue or a problem. Without historic parking waivers, this development cannot and will not go forward. It just won't. And lastly, this is, I want to repeat something very important. This is not a public-private partnership. It is a private development. So, that's very important to consider. The developer's putting a lot of money into this project, and it's not a public-private partnership at all. So, I request that this go forward tonight, because it's going to go through a much further review and certainly unto the coastal commission. This is a terrific project, and if the time has come, now for North Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wallace Hunt, I think is next. Wallace Hunt? Am I that right? Miramar Theater, Wallace Hunt? Okay, well, followed by, next will be Tyler Johnson. After that will be Brad Malmwood.
Good evening, my name is Tyler Johnson. I'm a business owner in North Beach, San Clemente. I'm also active with the North Beach Community Association. I don't have a prepared remark for you tonight, I'm just here to, to urge you to, to move forward with this. You don't, you don't have to be told that the eyes of San Clemente are on you on this one, and there's a lot of people that are excited to see this and, and have wanted this for a long time, and you have an important job at your, at your feet. I would urge you to make sure that, like Wayne said, that this being a, a private enterprise, that, that you stick to the, the letter of the law with this and not get bogged down by personal preferences that, that may enter in, that you let the, the letter of the law govern how you see this and, and not allow anything to bog down what I think has been a great project that's, that's had a lot of eyes on it already and has been through a number of, of committees and, and like Jim said, has, has thousands of little pieces to it. And, and so I think if you just, if you'll, if you'll do your job to the letter, that we'll end up with a great, with a great thing for, for North Beach, the people of San Clemente. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tyler. Brad Malmwood, followed by George Gregory.
I'm sorry I missed the start of Amber's presentation, but I think I'm living in an alternative universe. First of all, I'm in favor of the project as is, so I'm not against the project, but Amber and I should have sat down for a few hours and talked, because I think she's a little bit off, and it's hard to believe she could be on the parking waiver situation. But be assured, the coastal commission doesn't grant historic parking waivers once the place has been abandoned. My concern is simply that we have sufficient parking. I sat here with the beach parking fund and was told by Mr. Holloway that we will not have enough parking, over and over again. They litigated we would never have sufficient parking, and now they're coming here saying we have vast amounts of parking. I happen to think they're right, they do have vast amount of parkings, but it's odd how the story changes when the city wants it to change. My concern, however, is also the historic parking preservation from the casino. Of the 96 spots that Amber says exist, 64 of them have already been pledged to the casino. That math didn't appear to be included here. Also, where those spots are gonna be put, the MOU is not owned by the city, they can't put any parking there. The ECR is an available spot for 32 spots, but so far that's been shut down by the coastal commission. And the other lot is more than 500 feet, which is outside the legal zone. In fact, that, that contract, and I've talked to Wayne about, is an illegal contract, because under the code, it has to be within 300 feet, and that's 1,000 feet. The council didn't try to put the two together. I mean, you should look at the code, it requires the parking be within 300 feet of location, might be 500 here. Amber's far better at this than I am, I'm shooting from the hip. But you can't put it up at that lot, 1,000 feet away, it's illegal under the city's own code. Now, you can amend the code, but not planning. The city has to do it. My concern is for the residents down there, that there's ample parking, and, and it's clear, if you just do the math, if everything's going at one time, there isn't sufficient parking by special events, it just doesn't exist, and it's not, I mean, we should expect that Friday, Saturday nights, that place is gonna be inundated with cars. I don't, I want the project to go forward, I just think we should figure out a way to get it. There is money, there is money. There's a million dollars sitting in a marble head fund that you could use to build parking, you being the city council. I just think we should get the parking worked out. Not now, go ahead, they can work out down the line, but let's get parking there. Let's not think that there's not gonna be a parking problem, there will. And this 2035 projections, we depose Mr. Canepa, we depose Mr. Holloway. You can read those depositions if you ever want them, I can get you copies, but I will tell you, I could, I should get them to Amber. They still, the city still sits with the idea that in, as of 2009 to 2035, even without the Miramar open, basically, there will be no parking on there. I happen to believe they're wrong, I think Mr. Canepa was wrong, I think Mr. Holloway was wrong, I think he's correct today. There will be ample parking, but I think it's something that should be more explored than just, let's do this. And I don't agree, Amber's smarter than I am, but I don't agree that you get historic waivers down there. You get, you get waivers because there's available parking, but you gotta take away the 64 spots from the casino, that math didn't appear to be done. Anyway, I hope this project gets approved, and I hope that somebody down the line looks at the parking issues and makes sure there's ample parking, so that people down there don't have parking all over their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Greg, George Gregory.
Hello, council, George Gregory, North Beach, criminal, because I have a ladder on my truck. Hi, Amber. I'm hoping you delay this vote. I'm hoping you table this vote. I'm hoping that we include a summary in this report, because it's very confusing to read. We got 50 seats here, we got 445 seats there, we got da-da-da-da-da-da. We have no idea, last I came up with over 700 drunks speeding through my neighborhood. Okay? There's no traffic report in here. If you've ever tried to exit North Beach to go to work, it's tough. You take de Sheca, people are trying to go right, there's a little queue right there, they're trying to go across to 7-Eleven, everybody's getting their coffee, or they're going around the corner by the casino where's the delivery truck. Now, we're talking about even more delivery trucks. The traffic's a big, big problem. Gee, five restaurants? Why five restaurants? Why not 40? Why not 40? How about just one? Are we going to build a basement? Can't we park cars down there? Can't we put the restaurants inside the Miramar? Can we intensify, densify this any bit more? Can we really? And I got to ask you, Mr. Smith, how many parking spots would it take to continue the beach trail and connect it to the new, new bike trail on El Camino Real? Now, there's a feature the whole city can get behind. So this, this, this is incomplete, and I would like you to just table it at least for a couple of meetings so it gets a summary and so other people get notices. I'm pretty sure the hobos that live in the creek right there got notices. I didn't get a notice. I just saw this posted the other day, 10 days, 11 days, something like that ago. The neighbors don't even know about this. So in our neighborhood, it's going to be terribly, terribly impacted by this. And now, I guess we can create more parking, though, by picking on some more blue-collar families. Maybe take away the red cars or something like that off the street, too. You know, guys with ladders, guys with red cars, let's get rid of them. Let's make them criminals also. This is criminal to us. This is a private development made with public treasure. That's our public treasure. Let's, let's continue the beach trail. Let's pare this down to size. Let's summarize it, and let's give the citizens in that area a little bit more time to digest this. A 300-foot radius is a terrible radius. I brought this up before. We need a bigger radius of notice to the citizens, especially to people adjacent. They're going to be impacted by this thing. 300-foot radius hardly touched any of the, of the property owners around there. So you guys, those are really good points. Traffic's going to be terrible. I'm going to be coming home. I'm going to be competing with people wanting to park in my neighborhood to go to the concert. And in the morning, I'm going to be competing with big giant trucks trying to deliver a bunch of more beer, singing speed around my neighborhood drunk. Let's continue the trail. Let's less intensify this, this project. It's way too intense, way too dense. Can you see all these people getting out of the concert drunk on their phones, just walking right across El Camino Real? It's going to happen.
Thank you, George.
Thank you very much.
And for the record, your email was included in our package, by the way. Time for the staff reports, too, also.
I don't know which one it was, but okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holloway and Mr. Conrad, you, you put cards in, but you have no, no other desire to speak. Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll close the public hearing and start in the discussion. Let me just set a little tenor here, tone. The task tonight, of course, is a very important project for, for North Beach. We have prepared for this, I think the staff's prepared this commission extensively. We had two study sessions, one on sequo and one on historic preservation and Secretary of Interior requirements over the last several months. The project went through three, I think, lengthy DRSCs, and I thank the, the staff and the, and the sub, the members of this commission that are part of that. There are also each commissioner, I think, paired up and went on a tour of the, the Miramar, I think. Show of hands of everybody, anybody that did not, I guess. We all put our helmets on, our masks on, and our gloves and walked in and out of the theater, up into the projection booth and through the, through the bowling alley. Came out lightheaded with all the black mold on it, so it's been a pretty, a pretty rough shape compared to the historic report of 2013, but I think there's been an extensive preparation by the staff for this project and for this meeting tonight, but for this commission. We have four specific tasks or findings we have to make. The cultural heritage permit, conditional use permit for alcohol and live entertainment, the additional CUP for parking and waivers for historic property, which has obviously been discussed tonight. In our general plan, we have incentives for that. Also, we have to focus on a site plan permit. Those are what we have to make findings for in addition to the sequo and exemptions 31 and 32. This all gets tied together very tightly. It's all, many pieces put together to make it all stand alone from those four requirements. With this project going forward, there could be a possible future discussion of a historic district in this town, which is also part of our general plan. And without this project, that would be premature, I think, but that's my opinion. The design review has been extensive. I've read all the minutes that are in, in your package. You know, this is, it's tough to start moving walls. It's sequo, section 31, the exemption we're trying for, and we can't, you know, it's not about moving structures. It's about dealing with the site that we have. So there are 70 conditions of approval here. We have a couple to discuss, I guess, that brought up on possibly number 24 and 32 on noise and sound at night. Many of these, though, I thought were excellent there, particularly for an historic structure required to have documentation to the structure and other things. So there's some very good efforts put forward in this area. I think the SIP process is a viable process in this town that can be considered based on some of the comments tonight. And with that, let's focus on the task at hand, and we'll start with Mr. Blackwell. We'll start from right and go to left.
Before we go into discussion, there were a couple of comments that were made and questions that were proposed by the, by the public, and I'm happy to address and answer those if you'd like me to. Okay. Mr. Malmuth and Mr. Gregory both proposed several questions. Mr. Malmuth unfortunately is left. I will answer his questions, but since Mr. Gregory's still here, we'll go ahead and address his first.
Okay.
Can you say something?
Yeah, could you do address Malmuth's on the fact, he was saying that the casino parking wasn't included in the calculation. I believe it was.
Okay. So we'll start with Mr. Malmuth's calculations.
Wait, I added up.
You're absolutely right that the casino, 64 waivers were included, and that might have been on a part where Mr. Malmuth was not in the room, but in the breakdown. There are, in fact, 196 parking spaces. We went conservative and did not assume there were revents in there, so we actually subtracted the 64 plus the Oldie Hanson Beach Club, which he did not discuss, which is an additional 35, and that was a total of 99 parking spaces that were removed, which gave us the surplus of 97 still. So that was covered. Mr. Malmuth also said that parking has to be within 300 feet. He's correct in a different part of town. Historic parking waivers, and he might have missed this discussion, too, are different from parking waivers in the downtown area, which does have a 300-foot requirement or 500-foot requirement outside of the downtown. But for historic structures, it just says parking within close proximity. So that was an incorrect assumption on his part. Those were the only two questions I had noted for Mr. Malmuth. So to go over a couple of questions from Mr. Gregory, the number of seats, he asked for clarification on that. For the total site is 635. That's 435 seats in the event center and 200 seats at the restaurants. For the restaurants, it would be 150 seats outside maximum and 50 seats inside maximum. He asked if you can park cars in basements. I didn't go over it in the discussion, but in the findings, we do talk about can parking be provided without causing substantial harm to the historic structures by doing an underground basement. It was not found that that would not result in potential harm. The basement that is proposed is within the footprint and set inside, and the, the historic structure can remain in place and intact without impact. The other one would require a complete excavation of the site to actually have functioning parking down there. So that was reviewed. Asked about a question about noticing, the required noticing was done. Mr. Gregory alluded to 300 feet. That is the city requirement for parking. If anybody had been requested to be notified of the project, then that would have been extended to them, but we did follow state requirements and local requirements for posting the site as well as doing the noticing, as well as putting it in the paper. There was a question about continuing the beach trail, and I just wanted to note that the improvements that are on South El Camino Real between Estacion and Camino Capistrano actually is a continuation of the beach trail. So it will start at the north end of town from Camino Capistrano and go all the way down to the state park. And on a separate issue, we are looking at completing it down there through other avenues through the LCP process, but it will be complete in the north part of town. That traffic impacts was another concern that was reviewed as part of this. Our traffic engineers reviewed the project based on existing, proposed, and it was also analyzed under the general plan, EIR, and this development was not found to have an, an impact on our traffic or levels of service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Amber. Appreciate those clarifications, but the way I read the staff report, the, the waivers for the beach club and the casino were, were in your calculations. Mr. Blackwell.
Yes, yes. So I think our volumes have been turned up, so hopefully everybody can hear just fine. Yeah, okay, great. Well, my thoughts on this project, I think not only is it very pretty and true, this is our gateway to the city, and so we need something pretty there, so that, you check that box. It's a necessary and very well-thought-out project. I think it's going to work out very well. One of the things that we do here is we plan for the now, and we try to plan for the then. Some of the concern I have about the then is, is the what it's going to look like scenario. We calculate parking need on seats, square footages, and there's another component that hasn't been factored in here, and that is, you know, the ranch is developing 14,000 dwelling units, which is going to be a lot of people. You know, that's roughly, you know, twice the size of Ladera Ranch. The path of least resistance is La Pata to Pico to what will prove, will likely prove to be quite the destination spot, not just for San Clemente residents, but outsiders, folks that are visiting the city. That's going to be the first stop, whether it be via Camino Real or Pico. I think what could happen is that this could end up to be a very popular destination. Staff had referenced another very, very popular destination, and, and in my opinion, a landmark case in adaptive reuse, and that's the Packing House in Anaheim. That use, I've been many times, and, and especially during peak hours, you're hard-pressed to find parking anywhere. It's, it's, it's a problem, and it is a problem that's, as part of the public record, was not anticipated. The popularity kind of superseded the calculations that, that were done and not considered. So I think that with a concern for the residents and, again, human behavior, parking should be something that is really looked at. Right now, we have adequate space. Staff has shown that in the report, and we have capacity for, you know, increased usage at the, at the, at the location. But what we haven't discussed, and I think what wasn't worked into the scenario, was the potential for even greater popularity of the use and greater demand on parking. So before we grossly underestimate our parking as a, as an afterthought, when we realize that that may have happened, I think this would be a good time to maybe consider factoring that in as a forecast into a new report as an option here. We could, we could explore that, discuss it here at, at this point, and maybe address that and have the professionals look at that. Again, the design is phenomenal. It's, it's amazing, and it seems to work now, and it, and it will likely work later then, but my concern is the draw that it's going to create, and a great example, again, is the Packing House in Anaheim. Roughly the same size, parking is, is a huge, huge issue that some of the best parking folks in the region looked at and didn't anticipate. With that, I, I'd say I'd support this project the, the way it's proposed. Very nice.
Mr. Talley.
The good news, Commissioner Blackwell, is if they're coming down La Pata, it won't be very fast. I, I think this project aesthetically looks, looks beautiful. I, I look forward to, to seeing it complete. I have, you know, small, young, young boys at home, and we go to North Beach quite a bit. We enjoy that area. We enjoy the trails. We enjoy the limited food service that's down there right now, and we look forward to, to more options. I look forward, hopefully, being able to watch a, a band concert for, for my sons there instead of having to go all the way up, you know, the five to, you know, halfway to Irvine. I, I too share the concern about parking. I think the comments that were brought out in the public comment section are, are important, and I think we're in a situation where we are today, which is we can approve this project because we have excess parking, but I, I fear that this will be popular and that, as our chairman said here, could lead to, to more of the district being built down there and more use that we don't anticipate today. And so I don't want us to fall behind on that. And so it's, it's always better to have too much parking and not enough. And so let's not, let's not lose sight of that into the future, and let's, I would implore staff to make that a priority, to bring to this commission and to the city council how we can, how we can get ahead of that. And again, I'd rather have too much parking and not have to worry about door dings than, than not enough and wondering where I'm going to go and how I'm going to be able to enjoy the, the fine facilities that were, were rehabilitating down. So I certainly support the project. I would, I would follow the advice that some of the public made, which is I think we, we don't get off the rails on certain elements or certain conditional use permit sections, and we, we, we take what we have in front of us here, which is a tremendous asset to the community.
Thank you. Okay, going on through, I'll just swing through on this. I am going to support this project. I think it's very well put together. It's excellent design, and I think between staff and the applicant, they work very hard together, design review subcommittee. You try to what-if it as best you can. If you, anybody here that's absolutely perfect at predicting the future, I really want to get you to know you real well. You know, it's tough to have concerns about future problems. It's tough to predict the future, and so you don't. How do you build, when, there's such a thing as having too much parking and no buildings downtown to do that. We've had some traffic studies on that and some presentations to this commission. I would entertain, I think, that we should consider a recommendation going forward to the, to the, to the council in support of this project, that they also consider entering into the capital investment program process, which I think is very robust in this town and very well laid out, that they anticipate the properties that are available down there if, if the demand shows it, and so we can put a parking lot together. I found the other day, I showed Commissioner, or I should say City Planner Greg, the original design for the parking lot right across the street between the berries that somebody went to the Coastal Commission and shot down. This commission passed this project about four years ago. It was really a nice parking lot, and that's right across the street. It's on hold by the Coastal Commission, but the city council can activate on that very quickly. The design is done. They can refurbish it. I'll even contribute my drawing to the city council briefing package. But so there's, what I'm saying is, we have a process in this city where we can anticipate parking as required, whether it's lead, lag, or whatever. We can work it, and I think the commission can consider a recommendation, too, going forward to the council, that staff energize the capital investment program process going forward as this thing comes together for additional parking. So that's one way I think we can possibly, you know, anticipate some of the concerns that the commission has and some of the, and the audience has in the local neighborhood. Other than that, I think the report and the conditions and, and how it's all tied together is very important that it, so that the historical preservation is achieved, and so I think we have a really good program here. We've done the best effort we can on parking with the numbers you have, and I think we need to work probably condition 32, 24 on noise. Like, we have all the other things in there on noise. Acoustic meters will be done. We can soundproof if it gets too loud. All the C conditions of approval in there. 32 says if it gets too, if you happen to open the doors for some reason, you have to turn it down to ambient street noise. I, I would consider just eliminating 32, but I'm open for debate on that because you've got all the other requirements in there. Noise meters, soundproofing required if, if needed, the usual things we demand of other restaurants in the area. in the area. Huh?
I'd like to make sure that that does what the applicant feels about.
We'll give him a chance towards the end here. We're still under debate here. But with that, I'll continue on. Mr. Crin?
Okay. I want to say we spent a lot of time on the building and the design and design review, and I appreciate the comments by our chair. I also want to say Jim Ruland's comments about not trying to gild this, they presented a design to us, there's going to be a design development process that they go through to make all the equipment work, make the mechanical work. When they get into this project and start tearing things down, there's going to be additional things that we don't see and quirks that will have to be reviewed by planning staff, and if it's major, I assume might come back to us if they were major. But they've solved all the questions, and what Jim said is right, let's not get too picky on it now, because it's going to be done right. And because it's a historical building, it's going to be reviewed constantly during construction and the drawings. And what Mr. Eagleson said about this being a private project, it is, but it's really a joint venture with the city and awfully one-sided. They're, applicants putting up the money. But we're providing the parking, we're saying we're providing the parking, and there's going to be a contract between the applicant and the city, and I want to make sure that city council understands, at least my concern, that we make a commitment, if there are issues, that we're going to solve the parking problems, that this project incorporates. Anything new outside of this development is a whole other issue. So I agree with the parking calculations that have been done. I do want to make sure the neighborhoods that are adjacent to this project are protected by the city. If there are overflow parking going up into the residential areas, I want to make sure that that's avoided and controlled in some manner, and I think the contract might be able to have something in it. But that's up to city attorney, city council, and the city manager to negotiate, and that's outside of our purview. So I can make the findings for all of the applications, and I am in support of it, and I appreciate the public coming out and making their comments on the project also.
Mr. Wu?
This proposed development, if it's built, it will be the combination of North Beach revitalization. So I would not hesitate to support this project to move forward. I was on the design review meeting, so we had a long meeting with the applicant several times, lots of debates, but in the end, put aside my personal comments on particulars of the project design, I fully support it. Now with that said, I have a few concerned comments I'd like to make. Mostly, it is a recommendation to the city council. And the first item is the sidewalk. Whenever we have a project $50,000 or more, the applicant is required to put a sidewalk in front of the property. I cannot imagine that we cannot do a sidewalk on Calle de Shecha. The current sidewalk, as we pointed out, is very narrow, but the sidewalk doesn't have to be on a curve. We can have a shared street with a pedestrian to take precedence over cars. Cars can still park there, but the people will take priority. So there are lots of solutions to make the back alley more accessible for pedestrians and make the whole project more pedestrian oriented. We also talked about the corner of Calle de Shecha and Boca de la Paria. Currently, the sidewalk does not make the turn, and it continue on the sidewalk. It's cut off by a little utility stuff there. So I'd like to see the Calle de Shecha to be pedestrian oriented, whether it's a sidewalk on top of the curb or it's just on the alley. Either way. The second item I'd like to talk about is the parking. We had some calculations, a lot of calculations. In the end, we said, even if we consider the parking waiver to the casino, we still have enough parking for the waiver of this project. We barely have them. It is, it's important to realize that the real parking demand created by this proposal is not a 92. 92 is the waiver we're going to give the applicant, but the real demand is 635 seats divided by five, so it's about 127 plus minus. That is the best estimate we can. So that many cars will be around. With those parking demand added to North Beach parking lot and public street, the occupancy is going up from 50% to about, if I have to guess, it's to about 85 to 90%, which efficiently used the parking capacity we have. But that's all we have in North Beach parking area right now. The city is giving all the potential, all the available capacity of parking to this single project. So I think the city council needs to understand that. A gripe I have is the lack of accessible parking, because if we were to have plus minus 100 parking spaces, four of them needs to be accessible parking for disabled person. Now they have to park in the public lot. It's a long way to get to the proposed project. They have to cross Calle de Shecha, they have to cross Pico. None of those crossings are equipped with accessible devices at this moment. There's no audible signals, the ramps are not in compliance with ADA, accessible path now. Now if we were to waive all this parking, we're also waive the disabled and accessible parking at the same time. That means the city has to come up with some fund to make the pathway accessible. Otherwise, we're exposed to some potential liability. So that's something else I would like the city council to realize when we talk about a parking agreement with the city, with the applicant. With that said, overall, I overwhelmingly like this project, and I will support that.
Would the city attorney like to comment on this, or the planner on the accessible parking, because I know there's something right across the street.
Yes.
In front of the casino, there's four spots right there.
So the deputy community development director and building official, Bill King, did review the plan in detail and had said that the parking that is provided as ADA accessible in the public parking lot is sufficient for the project.
Okay. But the path of travel has been?
Path of travel is something that I would have to defer to them, but he did not seem to have a concern with it. But I'd want to defer to him for the details of that.
Okay, well then, the parking waiver requirement in the contract with the city, are there ADA requirements there? Because most of those times, those can't be waived. Is that right, Mal?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, yeah, those issues can be waived. I'm not aware at this point of the content of that contract, but the...
It was executed before your law firm came on.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Okay. This project represents a great, great opportunity for the city of San Clemente to fix up an eyesore that's been there ever since 82 or even further back when this started deteriorate. It's really an unsightly mess now, and I think that this project presents an opportunity to have a smiling face when you enter San Clemente from the north. And I think it'll be a refreshing and revitalizing experience that's wonderful. There was an opportunity some time ago when the property next door was going to be Nixon Library, and I wasn't here then, but as I understand it, there was a great opportunity to make that work, and at the end of the day, because of whatever other problems that existed with that idea, it didn't happen, and now it's gone and it's somewhere else. And I think this project is similar in that. It's got a lot of problems. This is not fully baked. This project has problems. The parking is not going to work. The numbers, you can go with the numbers as much as you want, but if you really want this to be a successful project, you are going to have a lot of people in these facilities. You've got the casino, you've got the swim center, you've got the event center, you've got the restaurants, you've got Metrolink, you've got the bike trail, you've got people just coming down there to get to the North Beach, because North Beach at some point will become another decent beach, I hope. It's going to be a demand area, and this parking is not going to work. It's, be foolish to say that it's going to work with these number games that we're playing. It's just, it's not. So the question is, is the city prepared to take this approval, go forward, but then have a plan to augment the parking quickly so it's not a disaster? And I think that's imperative, that that has to happen with the opportunity that's presented. Otherwise, I could easily deny this project, easily deny it, because it doesn't meet reasonable parking requirements. Absolutely not. This is too high volumes of occupancy jammed together in an area that already has other facilities that have high occupancy, and we're just adding to it. So the reality is, is there's got to be more parking before it's a disaster, and I think it needs to be put in the pipe now, to be looked at and say that we want to approve something like this, and we know that there's a problem. So that has to go to the city council with eyes wide open and say, we realize that we can play games with numbers and waivers and so on and so forth, but at the end of the day, it's you and me and everybody else that needs to find a parking spot when we go to that part of town, because I go to that part of town a lot. And I think a lot of people are going to come, and a lot more people are going to come. So we have a huge issue with that, and we're not going to resolve that here. We have to look at what's presented in front of us, which is an opportunity. And I believe that this is a wonderful project. I believe personally that it could have been much better. I made comments about how that bowling alley sits and what it could have done, and the outside dining, which it could have done towards the ocean and the park, that the alleyway could have been a major pedestrian, that there are urban design issues here that really raise above just this project in itself. It's a key to the whole North Beach area of how this all works and how it all interconnects, and it's not thought through yet. It's got some missing teeth. I think that we're hoping that those things will be identified and addressed. I think there's some design flaws that will never be fixed because of the way we're orienting the public space towards El Camino. I think that's, I think that's a huge mistake. I don't think that's a comfortable place to sit outside and dine. But nevertheless, it's an opportunity that presents itself now. And so I'm going to say, this is going to be a nice project. It's going to make things look good. It's going to really give us some other options that we haven't had in a while. We have an event space that's big, hard to come by. We have some dining opportunities in that area that are going to be really wonderful. And we could rehash this a million times. I'd love to rehash it. I wish I could take my pen and doodle out another design. I talked to the owner about that. Commissioner Blackwell and I were out at the site, and we thought, well, gee, you know, why wouldn't you want to sit on the other side, look at the park and things? Why would you want to sit along El Camino? Well, I asked those questions, and you heard the answers. So they said they looked at it, and they didn't do it. So should I deny that? No, I can't. I think we have to go with what we have, but we have to realize that there's some flaws here, and there's some fixing that needs to be done. And if we deliver this without bringing that message to the city council, I think we're making a mistake. So at the end of the day, I'm going to support this project with caveats that there's a lot of work still needs to be done.
All right, thank you. Some other practical discussion here quickly. Jim, you want to make a comment?
If you'd like, I can talk about the contract that would be done, if you'd like.
Certainly.
The contract that's a condition of approval that would be the obligation of the applicant to work with the city council on would be very, very similar to the contract that currently exists with the casino. And the way that, there is a mechanism in place to answer your question directly, and the way the casino, I'll just talk about the casino, but this is going to be modeled after the casino. The contract with the casino is that the applicant, the owners will maintain the historic facades and character defining features of that historic building. In return, at the time that there's demonstrated need for parking, the city will fund additional parking. And the mechanism of when that's needed is between the 100 days of summer, Memorial Day to Labor Day, when 50% of those days, you hit occupancy of 90%, which is an industry standard, then that triggers the obligation of the city to provide more parking. That's a contract that's already in place with the casino, so this contract that would follow along would be kind of belts and suspenders. But so there is a mechanism in place, and Amber showed where there is land to do that sort of improvement. So that particular concern, there is a mechanism in place.
That's very good news. Yeah, that's very illuminating. Thank you for coming forward with that. Thanks, Jim. So that, I think, I think that clarifies a lot of some of the parking concerns here. To wrap this up before we make a motion, I think there's a couple of conditions that would need to be tweaked, I think, Amber.
Yes.
You wanted to make a change to condition 10.
Yes.
The applicant shall apply to the city.
Yeah, just to clarify, concerning condition nine and 10, the first one, condition nine, talks about special activity permits on a one time. Those are done administratively, and staff asks for two weeks to review those prior to a special event occurring on site. But the next one is condition number 10. I apologize. It looks like it was, it's similar to number nine, but it really needs to be reworded to say the applicant shall apply for special activity permits for more than one event within a calendar year, and that is a discretionary review process. So there shouldn't be any reference to dates or anything in there.
Okay.
10.
That's 10, okay.
I can write a man for you.
Condition approval discussion brought up by former Commissioner Ruland, 24 and 32, if it's necessary to open doors and windows after 9:00, the volume shall be lowered to maintain the same volume of sound outside the building as audible with the buildings opening shut. Is there a concern? Do we need that?
If there's a concern, I don't see why it can't, cannot be stricken as long as the applicant is okay with that requirement.
24, as long as it's...
32, 32.
Oh.
We'll talk about 24 next.
You want to strike that condition?
Yeah, so it's talking about if it becomes necessary to open doors and windows after 9:00 PM, that the volume of the amplified sound will be lowered. I can't imagine when you would need to open the doors and windows, so are you okay with striking that condition?
I'm okay with striking it, because the chamber itself is, there is a barrier between the chamber and the player and the...
There's two doors, right?
Yes, there's two doors, is what he said, because they're not the microphones, so there's not the need to have that condition, so we can strike them.
Well, so it's air conditioned, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, new mechanical. Okay. Are there any other tweaks to the condition, the conditions of approval? I would note that, by the way, 623, you require a historic preservation consultant, and he has to be there throughout, and every time you modify the building. So there's documentation for us, so we don't go like, find what we had with the Old Hands and Beach Club, with new swimming pools installed that we didn't know about and all that stuff. So I think there's a tremendous amount of effort in here for documentation for us, we need to make sure that everything is documented.
I would like to know also that as part of the errata that the planning commission received earlier today, there were two additional conditions of approval in that as well, and that's also provided to the recorder, so that can be included. But the first one, 71, that's in the errata that has to do with changes, and whatever changes occur in light of the square footage being a bit off, that whatever happens, it shall... it shall never exceed the 92 parking space requirement waiver, so that's condition number 71. And then 72 is a, a typical condition of Spanish colonial revival, which is the inset requirement on windows and doors, and we would ask that that be implemented as well.
First one you missed in years. Very good. With that, let's entertain a motion.
Yep. I would like to say I think the applicant did a great job working with the restrictions that they have. We didn't get to do this on a clean slate, so there were a lot of restrictions, and he, they did make it work. But I'm, would like to move to approve resolution number PC 17017, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California, approving cultural heritage permit 16376, conditional use permit 16377, and site plan permit 16378, Miramar Event Center and Restaurants requests to rehabilitate and adapt or reuse two historic resources, and for the waiver of 92 parking spaces, indoor, outdoor, on-site sale and consumption of a full range of alcoholic beverages, and for indoor live entertainment with amplified sound at the Miramar Event Center located at 1700 North El Camino Real, with striking condition of approval 32, and including the erratic conditions proposed by the city planner.
And can you also include that you're determined that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA, per class 31 and 32?
And approving the SEQA findings for category 31.
1 and 32?
31 and 32.
Second.
Categorically exempt from SEQA.
I have a motion by Prantl, second by Tally, all with your favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes at 6 and 0. With that, let's take about a 10-minute break and reconvene at 9:00. Mm-hmm.[742.12]
8B, which is a variance. Quiet, please, thank you. Variance 16-219, the Buena Vista Owens Deck. Mr. Wright.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Chris Wright, project planner. Yes.
Chris, how are you today?
Doing well, thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too. So this is a request for a variance to allow a non-permitted deck at a property at 1001 Buena Vista. The deck requires a variance because the deck encroaches over the bluff edge and it encroaches into the setback, which is 10 feet required by the zoning ordinance for, from the bluff edge to where an accessory structure can be located. This deck doesn't comply with either of those things. It actually goes beyond the bluff edge. So there's some pictures on the right there of the deck itself. This has been a code case that was opened roughly about three years ago, and this application was submitted in response to that. And the first thing that was done, looking at the situation, was to make an understanding, when we found out that this deck was illegal, as whether it could be permitted according to our zoning ordinance. And we looked at what we interpreted to be the bluff edge is the red line. So the red line is where staff is interpreting the bluff edge. The applicant is interpreting it to be where the black line is located. And the staff report has the definition of bluff edge. If you wanted to get into the actual wording that was used to come up with this interpretation, and I'm sure the applicant will be talking about the subject later, I think what's really important, when you look at their materials, is to make a note of the history of the site. So the site was developed in 1976, as well as a neighboring site. The applicant makes reference to numerous references to the original grade of the site that had a ravine on it between the properties, and that there was a bunch of fill that covered that ravine when the sites were developed. That development memorialized where the bluff edge is now, because the Coastal Act was adopted in 76. The permits were actually signed off in 1975. So in terms of interpreting the bluff edge, we are interpreting it based on what you see today and what has memorialized through those coastal commission actions in the past. There's five important findings for a variance. The most, right off the bat, is there needs to be a physical hardship on the property. So that means a variety of things, the shape, the depth, the size, the topography, could be a number of things, that prevent a property right that others have with similar zoning limitations. So it's not based on the improvements on the properties, it's based on the properties themselves. And that's a big disconnect oftentimes when reviewing a variance. It's not what you see that's built, it's the properties themselves, and what the zoning allows with those properties. Variance is necessary to have a property right that others have, and otherwise cannot be provided because if a variance is not granted. The third finding is related to if a variance is approved, the conditions of approval are necessary to ensure there is not a special privilege. In essence, the variance can't be a special privilege. The variance cannot be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare, and lastly, has to be consistent with the general plan and the zoning code. So staff used GIS to understand these findings and figure out whether they could be met. We did a spatial analysis of the properties, where what we did is, we actually interpreted the bluff edge using the zoning ordinance definition and mapped that out, and then we took and figured out what the setbacks were on all the lots, and then we subtracted the setbacks from those properties to figure out what the development pads were for each of those properties. And that's what the teal shading areas are on each of the properties. And when you do that, what we came to conclude is that the site has the fourth-largest lot area, it has the third-largest non-bluff lot area, so the area that's not part of the bluff, it has the second-largest building pad area for a deck, and then it has the sixth-largest lot width of those properties. So with those observations, staff recommends denial of this application. There's not a hardship necessary to get a variance. We found that the site has actually more privileges than the other properties, the majority of the properties that we analyzed. So it is not necessary, based on that fact, that it is a special privilege based upon our findings of our GIS analysis, that the variance would actually be in conflict with rules and policies that are in place to ensure that development does not get close to that bluff edge in a, for the report reason of minimizing erosion and potentially creating larger issues with lot stability and protecting coastal resources, and that's reflected in our general plan. So in conclusion, staff recommends denial of this application. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any, oh, first, will you have a question?
Yes, when we do the analysis, we look at the whole project with the six units, the condominium as a whole thing. We don't look at the individual unit, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Blackwell.
I have a question of staff, yes, thank you. Chris, if you could begin to state whether or not this privilege has been granted to others in the neighborhood or in the same zoning district.
So when the findings reference a privilege, the findings are based upon what the properties allow, if you were to apply the zoning today, not what was built 50 years ago, but what the code allows today. And when you look at that, there are, like in the case of building pad, there's 33 lots analyzed on this stretch. We found 31 lots have smaller building pads than the property, so they have more of a privilege than the site.
Have any variances granted?
No.
For the same type of application?
No.
Okay.
Not on record, no.
Thank you.
Commissioner Aggleston.
Chris, you mentioned here, and I noticed it, it says, "The code enforcement case for the illegal deck was initiated in April 2013." It's been going on for three years. Could you explain why?
There's been, there's been an effort to cite the property owner. With some health issues, the property owner has asked us on more than one occasion to delay the public hearing, and we accommodated that request. So there's been more than one reason.
Okay. In your conversations with the applicant, with regard to coastal commissions, with regard to all of the findings that you had there, what has been the conversation like? I mean, have you explained to the applicant that it's going to be very difficult to make the findings here?
Yes, we mentioned this more than once. I took a great amount of time to inform the applicant early. When this first came to the public counter, I explained what the findings are all about, and that it would be difficult to meet these findings based on an early analysis of these properties, and the applicant was, they wanted to proceed anyway. So, and I've made that known in writing and at the counter and on the phone, so it was noted.
This is a coastal bluff. Obviously, the coastal commission at some point would become involved in this, would they not?
They would, yep.
And what would be your interpretation of the recommendation from the coastal commission?
I could only assume, they would be looking at similar criteria that we would, because the coastal bluff definition is the same that the coastal commission has, and so it's likely they would also have to process a variance for this application and come to similar findings, because these findings are actually in state law. These are not just city sanctum any findings that have to be met.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Tally.
When was this deck constructed?
Good question. It was before 2010. I went back to aerial photos. It looks like it happened around 2006, 2000, between 2000 and 2006. That's the best I could come to a conclusion.
Does that present a statute issue?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I have to take a look at the underlying code requirements and the underlying law. As far as the variance goes, there's no issue at all. As far as code enforcement goes, that's a different issue altogether, but a variance would be required regardless of when it was constructed.
Also, I want to make a note that the city responds to a code enforcement complaint. So even if this were built in 1997 and no one complained, we wouldn't proactively go out there and cite them, we're responding to a case.
Mr. Smith.
Okay, so this thing's been sitting there for 10 years, then, you guess?
I'm guessing. I'm going off aerial imagery, and frankly, not all the aerial images are great.
And it became a problem because a neighbor didn't like it or something? They called code enforcement? Is that how this became an issue?
We received the complaint, I can't, I can't comment on who complained.
Is there any other grandfathering or other representation of a similar problem on all of these kind of bluffs where decks might have encroached a little bit or gone over, cantilevered a little bit? Is this totally one-of-a-kind thing, or do we have other kind of examples? I mean, I'm kind of wondering if this is a grandfathering issue or just totally one-of-a-kind bad deal. I don't know where it fits in the scale of be this deck designed, you know what I'm saying?
I do. When the term grandfathering is used, it applies to legal improvements. This is an illegal deck, so the permits were not pulled. Let's say that this, actually, let's use the deck directly adjacent to the site. The deck shows up in the coastal permit that the applicant references in their packet. So that deck was permitted years ago by the coastal commission. That's grandfathered. This deck is not, because it's illegal. So if we got a complaint about another illegal deck in the same situation, we would be pursuing it the same way as this deck.
So when they built this in 2006, or whatever it is, they never came forward to the city to ask for any approvals or setback requirements? They just built it, and that was it? And now they're getting busted for it?
Correct.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Yes, thank you. Just to piggyback on the two last comments from the commission, to legal, could you sort of walk us through what overriding factors there may be with the prescriptive right, if that's what we're talking about here potentially, and an unpermitted structure? And how one would sort of affect the other in terms of giving vehicle to existence, if any?
Well, I'll tackle what I think is the second issue first, and that is the unpermitted structure, and this gets to the grandfathering question, right? There's a legal principle, it's called legal non-conforming uses, which Chris talked about. A structure can only be grandfathered if it was legal when constructed, right? So that's a prerequisite, that it was legal when constructed. So this cannot be a legal non-conforming use. If one were to want to pursue some kind of prescriptive idea, I'm assuming that the bluff property on which this deck illegally encroaches is actually owned by the property owner, so they can't apply that there. If it was owned by the city, you can't apply that principle against public land anyway. So this is not legal non-conforming. If it was constructed illegally, which it sounds like it was, there's no grandfathering, it's simply an illegal structure, and there's no way around that principle.
Any other questions of staff? Does the applicant wish to come forward?
The applicant would not like to talk, but I'm the engineer of the project.
Is your name?
I'm Stephen Peter with Peter &amp; Associates.
Okay.
All right.
So you're representing the applicant?
Yes, sir, I am.
You're the one that constructed the deck?
No, sir. But let's get to the history of the deck first. Let's back up to where we began on the subject sites that were built in 1975, '76. Coastal Commission approved both sites at this address and 915, the one directly south of it, a six-unit condominium place and a three-unit condominium place. And based on their findings and all the experts back then, they all had a 25-foot setback from the bluff edge, okay? And that's the key to this whole thing, is the bluff edge. Where is it? Okay, if you go back to before it was built, both properties, there was a large drainage ravine between both properties, and the property on the south was mostly a ravine, and it was filled in. And now there's an easement for drainage, and there's, I believe, a conduit that goes from Buena Vista to the bluff edge and goes down. And it's clearly shown in our consultants, engineering consultants' report of what that looked like, okay, defining the bluff edge. So here's the thing on this particular project here. The coastal commission and the city uses the same zoning code definitions defining what the bluff edge is. And this is where you really have to key in here, because everyone's missing the point on this, okay? Somehow, between 1975, '76, when these units were approved, and today, the definition of the bluff edge has changed, which I don't believe it has. I think it's misinterpreted, because before, in 1975, '76, it was a drainage ravine. It's not a canyon or a cliff, a drainage ravine that has been filled in. That being said, it's fill material where this deck is, and there's a conduit, a drainage conduit, that goes down to the ocean, okay? So nowadays, the city staff says, "Well, we're going to take the bluff edge," saying that it now goes in towards Buena Vista, almost touches the building, and then it crosses over and comes back out. Well, how can that be? Because back in '75, it hasn't changed the wording, but it's changed by how you interpret it. So in '75, '76, you have the 25-foot setback. And in the documents that were presented by Chris, the coastal commission documents on 1001 states that it is clearly a 25-foot setback. And then on the document, and that's this document right here, okay, that's the approval from the coastal commission in '75, '76. And on 915, it was approved, and it states here, "The structure maintains setbacks of 30 and 56 feet from the bluff face, but extends 17 to 20 feet beyond the ravine slope face, the drainage ravine slope face," okay? So somehow, city staff has interpreted the face to come back, the bluff face, edge, to come all the way back into that deck, including in that deck and coming back. And I say, "How can that be?" Because a condo would not be there, because you have to have a 25-foot setback for any building. The building on 915 wouldn't be there. So the bluff edge, again, getting back to the wording from the coastal commission, says, "The zoning code defines edge as the upper termination of a bluff," okay? That's what we have, 80 feet to 100 feet, very well-defined, okay? Canyon or cliff, which does not apply in our project here. "When the top edge is rounded away from the face as a result of erosional processes," okay? So here, we have two processes of erosion. We have the ravine erosion, and we have the bluff erosion. And this is where the key word is, "related to the presence of the steep bluff face," okay? Those are the key words, okay? I'm not an attorney, but I'm pretty sure an attorney will take those words and define the bluff face of where it's eroded from the bluff face erosion, not the erosion from the ravine, okay? So that's the key here. This shouldn't even be in a variance, but the way the city staff has interpreted it, it becomes a variance issue. So that's my one point. Second point, the history. The deck was built in, I believe, 1988, '87. Jack Owens bought the building in, I believe, 1997, and it became his obligation to maintain the deck, because it had been there 10 years prior. Before that, with the photos that city staff did not show you, it was, there was a retaining wall about three feet high and about two and a half to three feet away from the building edge, okay? And under there, under the deck, it had a concrete swell and a catch basin, and then it had another reventment system consisting of railroad ties and telephone poles, okay? So that's what the owner was looking at. So they decided to put the deck over because of safety issue, number one, and number two, you know, if you're going to live on the ocean, why have an ugly thing of a swell looking at a swell instead of a deck? So it becomes a safety issue. And number three, geotechnically, it's important, because it helps from slope creep affecting that building, and it helps from the erosional process from that building. So if you remove the deck, it creates another can of worms, okay? Because now you're looking at, okay, do you remove the retain wall? Do you remove the existing swell? Do you remove the existing railroad ties and the telephone poles? You can do that, but again, here's that issue with the bluff edge, the definition, because the coastal commission's going to come and tell them they cannot do anything. They can only support the building, but nothing else. And I have a lot of history and experience with this. So it becomes a real big risk, safety risk, number one, just going around the building. If there's a fire at the building, it's a huge risk, because there's no other way to get around to that building on that side. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Questions?
Mr. Crandall. So you're not making the findings for a variance, because you're not claiming any unique thing, or are you really asking for a reconfiguration of where the bluff edge is?
Right.
Which isn't what's before us?
Right. I would ask that, to have staff go back and look at the wording of the zoning or the code. As far as the variance, since they're looking at the entire project as one big project and not units, then I don't think we have a chance. However, if you look at them as units themselves, then Jack's unit would be impacted, because he would be in that new defined bluff edge face where he couldn't do anything. In fact, his building wouldn't even be there, so it's non-conforming anyway. So I'm not sure how this is going to go. You can deny the variance today, but I'm going to tell Jack to hire an attorney and define the bluff edge, because this becomes really an issue of an unpermitted deck, okay? Get the permit for the deck, get the engineering, the plans, get it approved, okay? That issue goes away. So it really belongs to, what is the bluff edge in this whole case?
Commissioner Blackwell.
Yes, I think there's
Yes, I would, I think there's some validity to that statement, especially if there's historic, there's documentation that supports that, going back to whenever the project was originally approved. If there are dimensions that are referenced, building edge, you can do reverse measurements back to where the slope edge was interpreted to be and considered to be at that point. That should have been done before.
And that's essentially what we did.
Okay.
We came back and said, this is where it should be at minimum. And it may be more because 1915 says it's 30 to over 50 feet back.
Okay, well then, let me shift the question to staff. Do you, were you aware of all of this information? Was it all considered or is it sort of coming out now? Or did we really look at this and make an interpretation that was based on the original permits?
We looked at the records. There's no plan that accompanies this permit that's in the file. And so we did look in the property file to try to understand the situation. I will say, throughout the applicant's document, they mentioned this ravine and as a compelling factor in their arguments of whether it's the edge of the bluff or is it a canyon or is it a ravine? That's why I started my presentation in saying, we don't look at it in any different way. We all see it as, staff sees it as a bluff property. Because when the Coastal Act was adopted in 1976, it memorialized the approvals that were granted at '76. And in '76, it approved the development that is there. Now, the Coastal Commission, they have different types of jurisdiction than the city of San Clemente does. Is there any guarantee that they're going to apply the bluff edge definition exactly the same way today that they did in 1976? No, there is no guarantee that they are. And the way that the applicant is interpreting the bluff edge is way more liberal than I've seen on any project that I've worked on in 13 years. I have not seen where the Coastal Commission let the city of San Clemente, you know, like if we, if I review this project brand new today, let's say it was a brand new building, the building would have to be set back further than what it's shown on this plan. Because they're looking at the topmost contour line that follows that bluff. And we didn't look at the ravine or where the fill was, we looked at where the topo is today. And then also, even more important, like when you look at, actually, if you keep going, like on the GIS analysis, if you keep going on the neighboring property, actually, if you don't mind, I've So if you keep going over here and you look where the line is, we memorialize where the deck is on the adjacent property. If you actually look at the survey that's provided, it's clear that if you were to go by where the elevations line are today, even the next door neighbor's building would actually be set back further. But we recognize that the Coastal Commission approved that deck then. On the subject property, the deck's illegal. So we're going off where the retaining wall is, right, that was holding up the grade. Now, there was several comments about the stability of the bluff and how would they get access to the unit and whether there should be a hardship based on where the unit is compared to the other units. Again, we go off, not the improvements on the property. It's based on the property itself, applying the zoning standard to the property. So it doesn't matter where the unit is on the property based on the findings. In regards to the stability of the lot and access, there are provisions in the zoning ordinance for lot stabilization and for access to the property. Even if, let's say it is right near the bluff edge, it doesn't meet the setback, there's exceptions that can be granted by the city of San Clemente and by the Coastal Commission if it's in addition to an existing building. If you need a path to get to the existing building, I think that meets the merit of that section and that does not require a variance. So there, those different issues were factored into our analysis. You know, if the applicant is now talking about changing the application to an interpretation, I would make a recommendation to the commission that, in essence, by the commission making an action on the variance, you are making an interpretation on the bluff edge.
Yeah. So, just for clarification, and thank you for that. And love the GIS, by the way. This is such an effective tool. I'm so glad to see this. I mean, this really is very helpful to have this sort of tool to make determinations from. Okay, so it is like this deck does not exist, really? So when the applicant applies, if you would
I would like to just make one comment because, again, he's saying on 915, the bluff edge is all the way to that building. That was a ravine that was filled in with artificial fill. How can that be the bluff?
Okay. Okay. So when we look at presentations, we like to consider all information here. And there's some clarification that might be necessary. And I need clarification, not just for me, but for others listening. It's as if this project, this deck, does not exist because it was built without permits. So we're starting over again. We're starting over and we're looking at the current site conditions.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. That's what I need to know. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Tally?
So I'm kind of, I think struggling with some of the same questions that you are, which is, I'm trying to put myself back in 1987 when the deck structure was built or at some point prior to that. I think if we make a determination, I guess I want to make sure I understand, if we make a determination on a variance and deny the variance, we're by definition stating that the bluff edge in 2017, as represented by staff, is here, wherever you're depicting it on your, on a map for the setbacks.
Yes. You'd be making an interpretation through the decision you'd be making, yes. You could state that in the record too, if you want to make it.
But what we seem to be, what we seem to be discussing is that the definition that we're using for a bluff edge today is, has, just our interpretation of what is a bluff edge has changed over the years. And there is, there is a dispute about what actually is a bluff edge and if this property, because of the way that the property was constructed and/or filled in, is that technically a bluff or is it something other than a bluff? Am I posing the right question to you here?
You are. I think to kind of go back to what you started with in your conversation is how you had, actually Commissioner Blackwell, you had said, so are we treating this as if the deck isn't there? And then there was a question, are we treating this based on existing site conditions? It really helps to think about it in that context. We are looking at where the topography is today, regardless of the ravine discussion. Because when the Coastal Commission, when the Coastal Act was adopted, it memorialized the situation out there. Now, today, it might be a different story, you know, because now the Coastal Committee, if you were to do something as of today. So when you ask questions related to the bluff edge definition, I would relate this a little bit to how the city reviews a project in regards to the city design guidelines. Same city design guidelines. Has the architecture quality of the city changed from the 1980s to now? It's the same design guidelines. And so I just bring that up as a point, as it's the same words. I don't think the definition has changed for a while. That's the best I can do to explain the situation.
If it's okay if I jump in here a little bit, just to hopefully add a little bit more clarification to, is coastal bluffs and coastal canyons are unique in that they are not stagnant, like we think of a lot of other property lines as far as setbacks go. You have one lot in the city, it's a flat piece of land, you have a 10-foot rear, 20-foot front, 5-foot side. When you have a coastal bluff or a coastal canyon, that coastal edge is taken at the point of time that development is reviewed under. Because it's assumed that that canyon edge and that bluff edge is always moving and it's always receding. And that lot eventually is going to get smaller and smaller and smaller. And so you can go off, well, in 1975, you know, it may have been 25 feet from that bluff edge, but that doesn't mean that erosion has not brought that bluff edge now closer to the development. And the reason for that is purposeful. They want to make sure that you don't use that edge that was determined in 1975 because now you're putting yourself in a health and safety situation concern.
And that's, so that's, I guess, at the crux of it, right? I'm struggling with this. I guess, if this had happened six months ago, I'd view it differently. Maybe I shouldn't, but I view it differently than the fact that this happened, you know, 30-plus years ago. And I understand that a variance in today's environment would not, is not being recommended, right? But I just wonder, is there another mechanism for, you know, a structure? And maybe the mechanism is, hey, the statute of limitations is run, we're going to deny a variance and, you know, you bring that up as a defense on a code enforcement. Hey, you guys had your shot, it told five, you know, in 1991, good luck, right? But it seems to me that there's got to be a mechanism by which you deal with a receding property line and something that was constructed. Because I feel like we're being asked to judge a structure that was constructed back in the 80s when, you know, I was in elementary school and trying to, and trying to apply today's standards to that, which I don't like the idea that we condone, you know, don't ask permission, ask forgiveness. I think that's very bad and that's bad for public safety, but we are dealing with something that happened 30 years ago, not two years ago. Is there a mechanism by which we can reconcile those issues or no?
Commissioner, or Assistant Attorney, just city attorney, would you weigh in on this, please?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, you know, I think the comment that was made about asking forgiveness versus permission, I think is accurate. The problem here is that if we assume hypothetically, this is hypothetical, that when the deck was constructed, whenever that was, whether it was in 2006 or 1987, hypothetically, that it could have been conforming with the bluff edge as it then existed. The problem is that they didn't come in for a permit at that point, right? And so we have to treat the application under today's circumstances and under today's bluff circumstances. Now, if the bluff receded since 1987 or 2006, when it was constructed, that's unfortunate, but that's what we're stuck with. Now, the point you're making is maybe there's an alternative mechanism available to the applicant. I don't know what that would be. That would be on them to uncover. But as far as a planning commission is concerned tonight, the only application before you is this variance application. Now, a very important point previously made is that the foundational question to the variance application is this idea of where that bluff is measured from, where that bluff edge is. Now, that definition has not changed. The interpretation of the definition has not changed, meaning what do those words mean, right? There are different opinions as to where the bluff edge is. And that's what's at issue with the applicant. But as far as the facts presented by Chris tonight and the bluff as a definition given by staff go, you know, we are dealing with today's facts in terms of the variance application.
That's great. That's the only thing you can deal with.
Thank you. I appreciate the guidance.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, you've been waiting patiently.
Yeah, this is fascinating. This is really very interesting. Did you go back to the dual property line thing, Chris, or who's, who's, who's of proper, of bluff line? Red, yeah, okay. So is it Engineer Peters?
Stephen Peter.
Yeah. You're kind of famous around here, by the way. I've heard about you. Done a lot of stuff on, a lot of stuff on banks, so he knows it. If you were to say, looking at that right now, it looks like the condo doesn't conform to 25-foot setback anymore, does it? Looks like it's sitting right on the edge. So you wonder about that, you know, gee, is that even conforming now? Maybe we shouldn't, we should tear that off of there or something. I think we've got a moving target here that's really fascinating. We don't really know what was there when this was built at that time, but we know that it's an awkward situation. But are we just saying, doesn't matter what, because he didn't have a permit, he's basically not going to get a variance anyway? Is that what we're saying? Because he didn't originally get a permit, it doesn't even matter now where the bluff line is because he didn't do it right?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that's not entirely accurate.
Well, then explain it to me.
Yeah, so the fact that he didn't get a permit, if that were disqualifying, we wouldn't have the application in front of the commission this evening. If the applicant qualified under the government code required findings, which are codified in our municipal code for a variance, for that variance, then the commission could grant the variance in spite of the fact that the construction was put in place illegally back in the day. So the fact that the illegal construction does not disqualify the applicant from a variance. The only disqualif, the only factor that disqualifies him is the inability to make the findings. And that's the commission's role, is to make or not make those findings. But the bluff edge is central to those findings.
But when this, when was this deck built? I'm not clear. I hear several different dates. When was it built?
I think it was built in 85.
85? The question is, where was this bluff line in 85? What if this was not where the red is, but maybe somewhere in between where this deck at that point in time was actually not over the bluff line? I mean, we don't know that, do we? If it was in fact, let's just say hypothetically.
We don't, we don't.
We don't know. But let's just say that in 87, that was the top of the bluff. It was okay, it wasn't past it. Let's just say it was, okay? Let's just say it was, but now it's eroded for whatever reason. Does that mean that now it doesn't comply because it did at that time? We don't know that. See, that's the point. How do we know that?
We have to apply the code and review the project based on what exists now. It's just like the other conversation we've had, like there was a similar conversation on the Miramar project and basing the review on the facts today, what we know now.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't know where that bluff line was when this was built, do we?
If I can chime in, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So again, hypothetically, if the deck had been constructed when the bluff line was further out and could have been constructed to code with the setbacks, they would have still had to have pulled a permit to do that because it was illegally constructed. That's a moot point and that's unfortunate. But we can't look back at what may have been back in 1987. We have to look at the facts today as they currently exist.
Sometimes the cars don't get dealt here right from a moral standpoint when you have to sit there and look at this. I would also comment, if you look at that one picture in the upper right, looking up the slope, you know, compared to now, whenever, that's an awful lot of erosion because that thing is hanging over the bluff, whatever edge is up there. And then the staff report, it's supported by a retaining wall and eight 24-inch, that's two feet caissons?
The applicant informed me right before the meeting that not all of those are caissons. There's three caissons and then railroad ties. It's just, the plans just have circles, so I went off what I saw in the plans.
So you know, the way they access the property, I don't think you really get down there and look underneath and see what's there or whatever. But what is, is, is that picture what was there, that's what's there today, upper right-hand corner?
It was within the last couple of years.
Okay.
Yeah, roughly.
And versus the red line and the black line. And so And so, whether you have a moral quandary or not is tough, but based on what's available today and to make the decision on, can we make the findings for the variance? And that's where, that's where you, I don't see where you can make those.
Well, let me, let me just finish my questioning, which was, the condo had to be 25 feet back from the bluff when it was built, right?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that that's why they have that black line that they've designed because that's 25 feet from the condo. So at some point, that had to be the bluff, had to be the plot, right? Had to be or wouldn't have been permitted. Isn't that correct?
Even if it was, even if it was, it's not today.
Ah.
We have to look at it as of today.
Yeah, but see, here's the problem. That was built back in time and this thing gets eroded. I live on a, I live on a pretty steep hill, and I can tell you, a whole bunch of that hill has moved quite a bit in the few years that I've lived there. And so I think that this is pretty much a gray area. That thing might have been not over the bluff when it was built, not if, if the bluff line was originally where it is in the black. Look how far away that is. Look how much erosion must have happened. It had to have happened or that building couldn't have been built there, correct?
But the building was permitted.
No, I understand my point, Wayne. My point is, is that when this building was built, that black line was the bluff.
We're not in deliberation yet.
No, we're not in deliberation. We're asking staff questions.
It's the bluff line. It had to be the bluff line when it was built.
So what's question of staff you're trying to ascertain here?
Well, I'm just saying that if, at the time when that house was built and that was the bluff line in black.
That's in discussion now, so can we hold off that until we get to discussion?
I'm just saying that certainly.
Question of the public to comment here, too.
Okay, but there's certainly been a lot of erosion.
Thank you.
So it puts it in doubt.
May I make?
Okay.
I'll have a question of counsel, but then I can do it in discussion.
Okay, are we done with questions of the applicant and counsel and staff?
May I make one point? So when you go off the black line, I just want to throw something out here. When you go off the black line, the deck does not comply with setback off the black line also. Just want to throw that out there. Doesn't meet either line. It encroaches into the 10-foot setback. The dimension shows it's seven feet, six inches from the black line also. So it would require variance even if you were to go back to the edge and.
Very good point.
When that building was constructed in 1976, presumably that's where the line was. So variance would still be necessary.
Mr. Eggleson, any more you wish to talk? Is there any more question of staff? The applicant's had plenty, and so we have a card. Let me open the public comment, comment period, and Mr. Joe Dougherty.
I commend you, gentlemen, for your patience for this evening. I've been sitting here since 6 o'clock waiting for this chance. I've been a resident of 1001 Buena Vista since 1980. I was there when the bluff needed some attention. The resolution was to put in some of those items that he referred to, the posts, et cetera, and at the same time, the owner put in a deck. That deck has been there 30 years, never been a problem. I suggest that if, if a permit had been pulled in 1987 or 86, we wouldn't be here on this subject, right? It's a permit issue. It's not a setback issue. And 30 years later, it seems like it's unfair, excuse me for using unfair on a legal issue, but it's unfair to deny this gentleman that variance. You can't.
Don't rap.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not used to these. So anyhow, my point is, it's been there for 30 years. It was in conformance with setbacks when it was installed. We collectively, as a homeowner's group, must have made a mistake because we didn't ensure that the gentleman who built it got a permit. I would venture to say that the contractor used the permit type of materials and engineering, but he saved some funds for the getting of the permit. If we were to go look at the construction today against the current permit that was invoked at that time, I would suspect that it's in conformance with permit requirements. It's just that somebody didn't go get the necessary permit paper because a sound engineer working here in San Comete isn't going to put something up on that bluff that's not going to be built to the necessary engineering requirements. Thank you very much for your evening.
Thanks for waiting around for four hours. Okay, is there any other members of the public who should comment on this?
What happens if we don't get the variance?
So that will be explained to you in due time. So let me close the public hearing and we'll go into discussion. Mr. Wood.
But the tasking in front of us is very, very simple, very easy if we were to follow the direction. Even if the applicant could go back to history and establish legality at that time, it doesn't matter because it's evaluated by the regulations when you apply for it, which is today's regulation. And for, also, your individual unit is at the pinch point next to the bluff edge. If I were to call, I would consider a red line as a bluff edge, I look at the site, it's a no-brainer. So there may be some difficult situation for that individual unit, but we look at the whole six units as a one piece, and you have plenty of area to put some decks there. For, there are five findings to be made in order to support your variance, and it's not even close, it's remotely, it's too far away, not worth explaining. I'm sympathetic to your situation, but there isn't a way for us to support a variance. I guess your only option, if I heard it correctly, is to put some hope on the statute of limitation, but that you have to go to court to get it. Fairness and being reasonable is actually very important in a court. It's a good argument to make, but I leave that to you. So with all that said, I cannot support this variance.
Mr. Crandall.
As far as the variance goes, they've never once mentioned hardship as far as the lots concerned and nobody's even pushed that point, and that is the main point of a variance. I'm thinking maybe the way to go here, and I think they may have a good argument for the location of the bluff line, but that's not what we're here today to determine. And it might behoove us to consider, I'm leaning towards supporting staff's recommendation, but maybe doing it without prejudice where the applicant can still pursue it and we're not cutting him off to find out and see if he can convince staff that the bluff edge isn't there and the fact that it doesn't comply even with the black line for a variance. I'm comfortable making that decision that the case has not been made for a variance.
Would Assistant City Attorney like to talk about, without prejudice on this thing? I think, I don't know if this is a thing you can entertain in this particular case.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, the next step, if the commission were to deny this application, would be for the applicant to appeal that decision to the city council. So there is one more bite at the apple at the city level, and that would be the opportunity to, if you will, work with staff and work with the city when it comes to the bluff edge. In terms of allowing the applicant to come back to the planning commission, if they were able to work with staff, there's really not a mechanism for that. Once the commission makes this decision, then the next step is to go to council.
Okay. Continuing on our way here. Mr. Tallow.
So I think you've heard me mention this. I think it's, I do think it's a raw deal. I would be very upset if I'd purchased a home and had found out 30 years later that there was an unpermitted structure. So I'll ask, I'll ask counsel again, is there any mechanism by which, by which we could, we could permit the deck to remain without a variance?
On the spot, I can't, I can't think of anything beyond, beyond the variance application. Now, that said, a variance is a discretionary permit. If the findings can be made, then, then the commission is certainly free to grant the variance. And it's important to note that the, the central and first finding in a variance is size, shape, and topography creating a hardship for the property. Yeah, I mean, you can look at that picture, and there are topographical issues. Now, whether or not the other findings can be made, I think, is a very important question for the commission to ask themselves. But I, I can't think of any other mechanism that's available to the applicant beyond a variance.
That's, I wanted to make sure of that. And then the other, the other thing that I am, I'm still trying to grapple with is, you know, the fact that this is a multi-tenant dwelling, which is causing some of the, some of the lack of findings from staff on the hardship because of the other areas that are available for a deck. Is that the proper way for us to be looking at that, even though they're, you know, deeded individually, but they're on the same, I guess, plot?
If I could have five minutes or so to answer that question, I'm actually looking that up right now. I was talking to Chris about that about five minutes ago, so if I could get back to you on that.
Okay, because like I said, that, I mean, there's common area, but it's not outside your home.
It's common area.
Yeah. Looks to me like it would be common area.
Common area.
I appreciate that answer.
Commissioner Michael.
Okay, so on that, if I may shift a question over to staff on some remedies to sort of mitigate. We've already come to the conclusion there's, there's been erosion over time, a million years, 200, there's been erosion, and there's been some change to the topography. Could the property owner explore ways to introduce some slope stability, maybe in the form of retaining walls, that would reintroduce a new profile to that slope at some point in time? Is that a possibility?
There are means in the code to stabilize the lot. There's requirements and there's options.
So maybe a new ridge line or top of bluff could be established through another mechanism using that approach. That could be potentially an approach the applicant explores. Not sure if that's viable or not, but it's something that might be, that staff might be able to work with the applicant on in the future.
I'm going to go ahead and chime in here a little bit. So there are caissons and there are retaining walls in there right now that are securing the bluff. In no way is staff saying you need to remove those caissons because it will destabilize the bluff. That does not change where the bluff edge is. If this variance were denied and the deck was removed, what we would be saying is you would cut those caissons down to just above the height of what the dirt is and then maybe camouflage them as best as possible, but keep the stability of the bluff itself. So that is not being proposed, is to remove the caissons by any means. No, they're not permitted, but you can't take them out without destabilizing the bluff and doing worse damage. Yeah, so.
Well, something, something I thought of was another example down the coast a bit where property owners have gone in and reconstructed the bluff, created a brand-new bluff out of concrete and composite material.
So those.
Black, what you're talking about, a reshape.
Right.
That's a very extensive coastal commission project to get approved.
Coastal commission.
In terms of mechanisms, that could be an avenue. I'm not saying.
Unless it's a natural force, otherwise to manually reshape a bluff.
In fact, there, some of those you see now, the coastal commission now has gone another direction. They're very difficult to get those approved.
Okay, well, if I may, just, I'm just going to conclude my comment, if I may. So what the Office of Planning Research says about variances, and I'm going to read this nice and loud, a variance is considered when the physical characteristics of a property would deprive a property owner from using the property to its highest potential, that's sort of more of a loose, more of a paraphrase. And also, the strict application of zoning regulations would deprive the property of uses enjoyed by others, other nearby property owners in the same zone. And finally, restrictions have been imposed to ensure that the variance will not be, will not be a grant of special privilege. In all three cases, it's a, it would not. So we can't even make those findings at all. So the variance on its face has no validity at this point. So for those reasons, I couldn't support this project.
Mr. Eggleson, you're noticeably quiet this evening.
I'm ready for our esteemed counsel.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, what was just read actually also comes in the government code and is codified in the San Comete Municipal Code. Variance findings are consistent across all jurisdictions in California, and it is property-based, right? So the question is, the, the property on which the deck is located, is that part of the, the property specific to this condo or part of the property specific to the entire condo complex? And that's, that's really the crux of the property issue when it comes to the variance findings. Does that make sense?
Could I, could I have the findings back up there?
Sir, actually, let me do something.
Okay.
Where's the actual findings?
I can't read that.
Can you read that?
No.
Okay. Here, give me, these are the actual findings, so.
Page, page three.
I have to go by what the findings are here. And due to special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, the strict application of the zoning ordinance is found to deprive the subject property privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under identical zoning classifications. The granting of the variance is necessary for the preservation of a substantial property right possessed by other property in the same vicinity and zoned otherwise denied the subject property. The required conditions of approval ensure that the adjustment authorized will not constitute a grant of special privileges which are inconsistent with limitations placed upon the other properties in the vicinity subject to the same zoning regulations. The granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public, health, safety, or welfare, welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. The granting of a variance is consistent with the general plan and intent of this title. I need to go by staff's recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
I could just do the opposite, Wayne. I could say that there's some safety issues here with that deck and welfare, property improvements. I think there's value there. You know, I really think we're splitting hairs on this deal. It seems that Commissioner Tally, you said it sounds like a raw deal. I think this is a raw deal. It just doesn't seem fair that with all of this moving of bluff lines, and at the end of the day, what's, what's so bad here? And the repercussion is, is all of a sudden now he's got to tear his deck out? It's been there for 20 years or so? Doesn't make sense to me. I, I think, you know, we're, we're going to end up splitting the baby instead of saving the situation. And, and I think it's, I think it's kind of ridiculous. I don't see what's so bad here. I see there's extenuating circumstances about bluffs moving and eroding and things changing and. and things were different then than they are now. And now to go back and say, well, here's the line and, oh no, it was way over here. And I know for a fact that my bluff line's moved. I see it move every day, it slips down a little, that's what happens in San Clemente. Just, it just does that. So, you know, I just have a problem with this. I just wonder why we're even going through this and asking for a variance. Why don't we just let sleeping dogs lie?
Well, let me chime in here and I'll get to you in a quarter minute. Because from whatever mechanism happened over time here, it has been brought forward. So there is no longer a sleeping dog. What is is. You can, part of the problem with this job is you can end up with these moral dilemmas. Sometimes these decisions are tough. Sometimes, you know, it's, you have to do the hard right rather than the easy wrong. And so, and we volunteered for this job and we've had to make some very tough decisions on this commission. That's, but we are national laws and now it's been brought forward to it for what is is. And the conditions or the findings are what we have to make. Many times, members of the commission up here kind of drift from that, but the findings are the findings. That's what we're here for. And is it a moral dilemma? Yes. Is it not a good deal? Probably, possibly. But the fact remains that what is today, what has been discovered and brought forward without proper permitting and without proper vetting at the time, we don't know about proper engineering what is there. We know that these are the findings we have to make. And I can't make these findings. And I think between Mr. Blackwell bringing it up and the support from the city attorney tonight, Assistant City Attorney, yeah, the code's the code. It's consistent across all jurisdictions. So I am gonna have to deny this request for a variance because of the law, despite all the other situations that you can probably tug on your heart. And that's, decisions are tough, but that's what we're here for. And so if there's any other discussion, Mr. Crandall, you had
Just a real quick one. We're talking about open space or coastal bluff, which are sacred in this town. If this were in a side yard setback and encroaching a foot?
Yeah.
You could probably say somehow you could do something, but I think like Don said, it's not always fun to make a decision like this. And I think it was a catch-22. The applicant isn't the one who built it. He purchased the property and was unaware of it at the time and I feel sorry for that, but he does have, like Mal said, the ability to appeal it. And city council can play by somewhat different rules than we can, but we've got to abide by the rules.
A couple other points to make, I think staff made here is even under the current situation, even the black line doesn't provide the proper setbacks. And so, anyway, that's kind of where we fall out on this. Are we ready to make a motion? Mr. Crandall, are you gonna go all the way tonight or you want me to read one? Are you getting tired? Looked like Mr. Blackwell was flipping pages there.
I want to cat it out. Let me get to it first.
Should be here. Here we go. Like this one right here? No sacrifice.
Okay, I'd like to move that. We support a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California, denying variance 16-219, no one's deck, request for a variance from the required coastal bluff setback to allow a deck constructed without permits at the rear of a six-year residential building located at 1001. May I have this?
I have a motion by Mr. Blackwell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Crandall. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 6-0. And staff, you can certainly brief the applicant on his other opportunities there, I guess. There is no
It can be appealed to city council. That's the next step.
There is no new business. There's no old business. We have a discussion on future, tentative future agenda and future meetings here. So Commissioner, City Planner Greg, do you want to talk about future agendas?
Just on the June 21st, there will be an appeal coming forward to the planning commission. It's an appeal of discretionary temporary banner permits and so be aware of that, that that is an item.
That's from the outlet mall.
That's from the outlet mall? Uh huh. So that's on the agenda that night. I did want to talk about the July 5th meeting.
That's the next
Yeah. So the 4th of July falls on a Tuesday, so city council has canceled their meeting for the 4th of July and didn't know if the planning commission desired to follow suit by canceling the July 5th meeting and wanted to have that discussion.
I'll be out of town. It's great out of me.
I would entertain
I'm out of town. I'm in Norway.
Okay, so we don't even have a quorum, so let's go ahead and
I would entertain a motion that we cancel the meeting of July 5th. I have a movement by, or motion by Commissioner, by Fisher Tally and a second by Commissioner Crandall. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 7-0. And with that, is there any other discussions?
The only other thing I want, I'm sorry.
There is one in June. There's another one coming up in June.
Yeah, June 21st, we will be having that one.
Yeah, we just discussed, we have it at what's the agenda.
Yes.
Bring your kevlar.
The only other thing I wanted to say is a great point of news was that the city of San Clemente received an American Planning Association award for the Paseo Master Plan. And I can't remember the name of the award right now, but it was recognized as an outstanding planning award. Transportation Planning Award, thank you very much from Peanut Gallery out there.
Who's that back there?
Some bearhead guy. Some bearhead guy back there.
So myself
Is he just fresh back from Syria?
Yeah.
Spy, spying.
So myself and Cecily Garriero-Daly, the community development director, attended and Cliff Jones, along with a consultant, accepted the award on the city's behalf and it was wonderful to see him do that.
We owe you a drink.
I just wanted to share that.
Thank you very much for putting that in the record. Thank you.
Good show.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn to the regular planning commission meeting to be held at 7 o'clock PM on June 21st, 2017, in the council chambers at
Seven or six?
We're gonna do six. I apologize.
Oh, 6 o'clock PM.
Regular meeting at 6?
No studies.
Regular planning commission meeting to be held at 6 PM on June 21st, 2017, in the council chambers at city hall located at 100 Avenue to Presidio, San Clemente, California.
A motion by Mr. Tally.
Second.
Second by Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.